Turn it off. And press again, turn it off. You'll see this red light.
All right. Good evening. Can everybody hear me? It is 5:30. It's Thursday, June 13th. We'll go ahead and call our joint Board of County Commissioner. Ellsberg City Council meeting to order.
Are we taking role like formally or just call it in? Okay. Okay, where is the? Do we have the clerk here to call the roll? Yeah, no. Yeah, everybody can turn your mic on by hitting the little guy on the, there you go. Your mic turns red, you're live. Okay, go ahead, Justin.
Yep. Here.
Here. Here.
Here. Okay, again, I'd echo, welcome to the special meeting. The subject for our special meeting here is to discuss the sleep center and the site analysis. And so if you have not received an agenda, we're going to follow the agenda. And item number one on our agenda here is to talk about meeting expectations and the decision making process. And so I guess first all, we probably need to talk amongst the commissioners and the council members in terms of public comment, in terms of time limits. Obviously, we have two separate processes that are normally used. And so I'm open to sort of input both from the. Better? Sorry. Okay. Let's start off by, so normally for the city council, we're using a three minute time limit for non-agenda items and five minutes for special hearings. So I just want to know from council's perspective, you know, do we want to? And then do we want to set a limit? Do we want to police that or how do we want to work that? And I guess the county commissioners need to have the same conversation because this is obviously a joint meeting.
Yeah, correct. Kind of curious in the room, how many people are planning to give public comment? I think that would, could you give a show of hands real quick? So we won't hold you to that if you don't want to.
So it seems about. Very reasonable.
Keep them up, please, so we can just get a hand count.
That'd seem reasonable.
Couple more minutes.
If you intend to give public comment. Okay, that's reasonable. Okay. We're.
About 23.
Thank you. You can put your hand down now.
The county usually has a three minute time limit on a public comment. As does the city, and I think it was printed in the meeting agenda that it would be three minutes.
So absent a motion and a majority vote by both, stick to three minutes. We need to conduct the meeting or somebody want to discuss that? Okay. In terms of outcomes or sort of meeting expectations, just, you know, from my perspective, we recognize this is an issue that people feel very passionately about. Our intent is not to make a final decision as to assigning a specific shelter. Although we anticipate that the outcome will be that we will narrow the list considerably tonight and then move forward with the joint process between the city and the county. And I don't know if you want to speak to that as well.
No, you covered it.
Okay, we'll move on to item number three, overview of the sleep, sleep center and site analysis presentation. So item 3A on the agenda is the sleep center overview and site analysis. And I believe, is that a staff presentation, Heidi?
It is. Can you hear me okay? Great. Good evening. My name is Heidi Baron-Sernoway, City Manager for City of Ellensburg. Good evening, council and county commissioners. This has been a project that is a long time coming, and I'm just going to check. Okay, we do have the screen share here. So the, this process started out with a joint meeting, actually back in December of 2021, where we heard about some of the challenges and regulations around enforcing camping. And at the time, and some of the challenges also in addressing issues around homelessness in the community as it was becoming more visible. At the time, the county and the city together decided to create a joint ad hoc committee on homelessness to really explore all the services and gaps in those services and look for how we might be able to better address those together. And in that process, the Joint Ad Hoc Committee on Homelessness has been meeting since January of 2022, exploring options. And one of those options was to look at a 24, or excuse me, an all year sleep center. And I know a lot of folks in the room are familiar with this concept. And the idea was to look at solutions to help our law enforcement to be able to enforce and to provide access for those services for people who are experiencing homeless and don't have a place to stay in a safe manner. So tonight, we're going to explore a number of options where if folks who have been at one of our open houses or joint meetings or meetings in the past, we're going to share information a little bit differently and some of it will be quite similar. So we're going to start out and then I'm going to invite some friends to join us here and friends that have dealt with folks firsthand in the community, our frontline people. So just to start out as a reminder, homelessness is a really complex issue. There are a lot of precipitating factors that get people into experience of homelessness. And one of the things that we know is that the numbers of people falling into homelessness are increasing at a rate faster than we have solutions available for housing. And one of the other things that we know is that one data point that's out there that's very consistent is that homelessness, rates of homelessness in communities are directly connected to housing costs. And so there's been data, a number of different studies that talk about how rents grow and the number of people who experience homelessness in communities grow. Homelessness is growing across the country, but not equally across the country. And so those, those data points are connected to rents. So we are going to start out with our law enforcement friends from Kennesaw County and also Ellensburg Police Department. We're going to talk a little bit about the cold weather shelter and then we're going to talk about the services. I think a lot of folks in the community are familiar with the housing and housing support services and homelessness services that are available right now in the community and talking about some of the gaps in those services and constraints on those services. So I would welcome our next set of speakers here.
All right, let's try that one. Perfect. I'm Cameron Clayson. I'm a captain with Ellsberg Police Department. One of the things we were asked to talk about here, obviously, are, you know, kind of the community perception and talking about homelessness. You know, that it might be somewhat invisible here in our county because it's not quite like what we see in these big cities. You know, you see the pictures or you go and visit and see all these tents and things like that. And so we don't necessarily, you know, have that issue. You know, part of it, we feel that we've been pretty proactive on how we've handled that. You know, taking a proactive approach and, you know, getting people to some resources, you know, whether it's for addiction, for housing, or any kind of food, things like that. And so I think our officers do a good job treating people with respect, but you know, kind of getting that cooperation from them. But currently, you know, our patrols probably get about, you know, estimate about two calls per day that officers are dealing with some kind of homeless, homeless issue that we're seeing. All right. As far as, you know, crime correlation is one thing we had up there was, you know, it's hard to put a hard number on that because we don't, when we, when we're dealing with people, we don't necessarily ask them, hey, are you homeless or are you not homeless? Because we're dealing with the situation, we're dealing with the crime, and we want to take care of that problem. But, you know, we, what we, what we see is that the homeless committing crime is a fairly small percent of the overall crime in Ellensburg. And there, there are a couple individuals specifically that account for more of the crime than the others. You know, that they're, they're repeat offenders, they're, they're doing a lot more of the crimes. So they're kind of skewing the numbers to some extent. And a lot of those arrests were for warrant arrests, so there's crimes, you know, that basically they'd already committed and they didn't show up for court or things like that. And relatively low, I mean, a lot of them were for theft and trespassing and things like that, but relatively few for like assaults and things like that. Want to talk a little bit about, you know, the, the cold weather shelter and what we had going on there. Obviously, during the cold weather months, we had basically kind of the same system that they're looking at here. And, you know, didn't see a lot of crimes associated with that. We did have some calls there, but it wasn't an overwhelming or remarkable number. And, you know, we did at one point have some complaints of, hey, we, we think there's some increased crime here. Kind of around the numbers, really couldn't see a correlation with that. In reference to homeless people being vulnerable and victimized, you know, because they are oftentimes, you know, they're victims themselves. And a lot of times they're victims of theft because they have to leave their belongings somewhere. You know, sometimes they're targeted, they're exploited, especially females. So.
I'm Inspector Chris with, with the Kennesaw County Sheriff's Office. We work with Ellensburg routinely and, and we have a perspective to add to this as well. I'm going to have Captain Clayson share with you first all the way through because EPD really is the place where the rubber hits the road on this issue. And, and so I'll let him continue and add a few things at the end.
As far as limited tools being available, you know, for enforcement for our camping ordinances. If we don't, essentially, there was some, some Ninth Circuit decisions that saying if you don't have a shelter, you can enforce these camping ordinances. So if we don't have that option, then that does kind of force our hands of whether or not we can tell people they can leave or not. So that's, you know, enforcement on camping on sidewalks and parks and things in that nature. Putting a stress on our current systems, you know, as far as EMS, incarceration, our hospital system. You know, I, I don't want to speak on, you know, EMS's behalf or anything like that. But, you know, if they don't have access to healthcare, they essentially will kind of put a strain on the system because if, in order to do that, they go through emergency services, which is strained enough. So providing them with some type of healthcare, you know, to where they don't take up those resources is important. But there's been times, you know, that sometimes people, they try to be arrested. You know, they, they understand that, or, you know, it's cold out, they don't have any food. So they're going to do things to try to get arrested. I've seen that in my career where they want to go to jail because they want somewhere that's warm for the night. They want some meals or they want to get some healthcare. And impacts to our businesses, you know, it's what we see is a lot of loitering. They might be sleeping on the premises. We have theft issues and trespassing for that. So the benefits of a sleep center, you know, obviously, talking about individual shelters versus, you know, kind of what the cold weather shelter was, what we saw sometimes when we, when we did go to calls for the cold weather shelters, you know, have a lot of people that are in one open space. Sometimes people just don't get along when they're kind of crammed together. So having an individual space to where they're, you know, have a safe place to sleep at night would, would be beneficial. And having a managed site, you know, to where they have security, surveillance cameras, you know, is, is a big thing. And then the other thing is people being able to lock up their belongings. So they're not allowed to necessarily take in all their belongings. They can bring some in, but they have a place that they can secure and lock it. So no other people aren't stealing those items. We kind of reached out to some other communities. So Captain Hansberry, when he was with us, reached out to Moses Lake and Walla Walla. So Walla Walla, they operate a 24 hour or 24/7, so they're, they're there all, all year long. One thing that they liked about that, there's a lot of onsite resources. So everyone that's kind of gathered in one place, they can reach out to those people and give them those resources. Had a couple assault reports and things, but they said, you know, just kind of having that staff and having security on hand was a, a big, big portion of it to keep people safe. And they said there was a lot of residents that had safety concerns, no matter where the location was. But most of the time that was proven, the, the concerns really didn't play out. And they also had some positive feedback from the community stakeholders and the downtown association seeing noticeable reduction in downtown crime and nuisance behavior. Moses Lake, they did have some issues kind of with the nearby encampment. People not necessarily associated with the sleep center, but they had a private, private property. The owner was allowing people to sleep there and camp there, and that kind of created problems. So those people were, seemed like creating more problems for local businesses. And recently, Moses Lake basically said, you know, they, they really don't have any data to support, you know, how effective this is. You just can't really put your numbers on that. But essentially, it was, you know, a response to a very visible public camp, camping problem and that it was a humane approach to give, give folks a safe place to sleep. and that it was a humane approach to give, give folks a safe place to sleep and access to services.
Thank you. The, the, the issue of homelessness is less visible in the county than it is in the city, but it still exists. We know about it and at the recent point in time count annually, we found homeless people that we didn't know existed. They're out there, but there's just more space to go in the county. The, the critical element of, of this potential shelter for law enforcement is, it's a tool. It adds to our ability to connect people with resources. It hopefully does so in a way that can happen before involvement with criminal justice system. For the sheriff's office, our best data on homelessness and the way that homeless people are involved with criminal justice system comes from the jail. We operate the jail, EPD and everybody else in the county books their people with us. When people book with us, they tell us where they're from and where they live. We know therefore that of the 3,000 and some bookings in the last 18 months, probably between six and nine percent of those people, of those individual bookings were of people who were or identified as homeless. But we also know that as Captain Clayson said, a significant portion of that is repeat offenders of the 74 bookings of homeless people in 2024 so far, 42 of those bookings are just nine people who get booked again and again. When we're booking those kinds of people, they place a special demand on the jail. So this is one illustration of the fact that we're already paying for this issue. We're already paying taxpayer money to deal with this issue because providing services to people in custody in the jail, which is a highly litigious environment, is very difficult and expensive. And you have to do it. So one, one piece of the puzzle is that we're already doing it. The other piece of that, of that, we're already paying for it is we've been paying for it with the blood, sweat and tears of church volunteers. And, and we've gotten a free ride for a while and we all owe them a debt of gratitude. Even taking into account those repeat offenders, though, the number of times that homeless people get booked into our jail is disproportionate to their representation in our community. The, the point that I want to make with that is that public concerns about homelessness and potential connections to crime are not unreasonable. They're not built out of nothing. They should be considered and respected. However, we also learn, learn from that data that those homeless people are almost all from here. Right? The, the notion that homeless people are running to other communities to tap into their resources. I know that these, the people who are acquainted with research on other members of this panel are going to talk about how homeless, homeless shelters consistently say that 70 or 80% of the people who turn up are local people. And that's consistent with what our booking numbers show. The sheriff's office has a view that, that it's a reasonable time and a necessary time, given our legal environment, or to add this tool to, to our ability to prevent homelessness from becoming more of a problem than it is, more of a visible problem and more of a disruptive problem. We also are of the view that public concerns that have brought many of you here tonight are not groundless or foolish and should be, should be a factor in the consideration of the, of the site location, site selection process, as I'm confident it will. Thank you.
Thank you, Captain and Inspector. I'm going to talk just a little bit about the cold weather shelter, which is a service that the Kinnitask Valley Ministerial Association has been operating on a volunteer basis for the past nine years. And this is a seasonal shelter. A lot of folks are familiar with it. I see in the audience, there's probably a lot of volunteers sitting in the audience as well. This has been a standard again from mid-November to mid-March. Cold weather shelters actually save lives. We know that we live in a valley where the weather can be pretty, pretty cold and pretty harsh and making sure that there are options for people to stay is, has been really important. And again, this year, the, the ministerial association voted not to do this. Since we've been working, we've actually been working with Pastor Green on our ad hoc committee for the past couple of years and has been a very strong voice. The ministerial association last year said they couldn't do this anymore and they squeezed one more year out of it. And at this point, they said, we need the city and the county to step up and provide, provide a space that operates. Over the nine years, what I understand is that the numbers that of people who use the cold weather shelter have been relatively stable, but there's a definite correlation when it gets colder and harsher, the numbers go up. And this is a congregate setting, again, only during the winter months. And so it's not an, and in past years too, it's also rotated from site to site. And again, operated primarily by volunteers, which is no longer sustainable. So this resource is going away during our winter months as well. So at this point, I would actually like to invite Brittany from Hope Source to share a little information about their services and about what they know about, first of about folks experiencing homelessness in our community.
Thank you. Can you guys hear me? Great. And so the numbers of homeless in our community are increasing. They have increased pretty dramatically over the last year. The number of unsheltered individuals in our community over the last year was 38. Unsheltered are individuals who are sleeping in a place not meant for human habitation. It means they're sleeping in a vehicle, they're sleeping outdoors, abandoned buildings, parks, encampments. They basically don't have a regular adequate nighttime residence. People who are unsheltered, they face significant challenges and vulnerability, exposure to the elements, lack of access to basic hygiene and increased risk to health and safety. In the community, we had about 63 sheltered homeless individuals. This includes the cold weather shelter, comprehensive transitional housing, Hope Sources, enhanced shelters, safe havens, motels paid for by the ministerial association and local churches. This to say that it is not just about these 101, that is a point in time count. It's, we served at Hope Source in 2023, more than 200 households to either obtain or maintain stable housing. So as someone obtains housing, another person is becoming homeless. And I think that the issue is that we need to have some place for them to sleep and be safe while we as a community come together to address the complex issue that is homelessness. So different causes of homelessness, are economic factors, clearly poverty, unemployment, housing affordability. If you are making the average social security paycheck, that means that according to HUD, you can afford $558 a rent. But the reality is, is the average one bedroom in Kinnitask County is $1,100. So the fact that housing is not affordable and not sustainable for a lot of people who are in that low income category. Also, health-related issues, mental health, substance use, chronic health conditions. A lot of Americans are one disaster away from being homeless, right? Diagnosis, a critical event, and health plays a really big role in, in causing homelessness. Domestic violence. System act failures, so lack of support services, discharge from institutions, people aging out of foster care systems, things like natural disasters. We saw this with the fires over the summer, that people are displaced from their homes and don't have a safe place to go and don't have the financial resources to, to find adequate shelter. Social factors, so discrimination, lack of social support and personal circumstances. So family breakups or evictions also play a major role in, in homelessness. In Kinnitask County, we have a lot of pieces of the housing continuum. We have emergency shelter on a seasonal basis with the KDMA. We've also learned that that is not something that is continuing. Enhanced shelter, we have 15 total units of enhanced shelter available in Kinnitask County. Transitional housing, youth and mental health specific transitional housing. Supportive housing, we have six units in this community of permanent supportive housing that is financial resources paired with support services to help higher risk and higher needs individuals maintain housing on a long-term basis. Affordable housing, I think it's really important to, to note that we have made really good progress on this, but still in the state of Washington, there are only 28 affordable housing units for every 100 families. Again, it's just the availability and affordability of housing that has really exasperated the homelessness problems. We have almost 400 units in Kinnitask County of subsidized housing and we have quite a few homeless set asides. One thing that's important to note about that is that those are permanent housing. So even though you must be homeless to qualify for those units, that's your unit forever until you move on to something else, just like any other rental unit. You enter into a lease and you can renew that lease as long as you're paying your rent and complying. So once those units are taken up, it's very rare that they come, come alive or come live again. I think all of our affordable housing properties in the county have wait lists. I oversee our, our homeless program so I can see how long people wait before they come up on the list for affordable or subsidized housing and it's significant. And then we have, we move on to kind of affordable homeownership. So Habitat is doing a really great job with the Stewart Meadows project and they're bringing some real tangible and attainable homeownership options to the community. And then we kind of get into that market rate, traditional homeownership and traditional rentals and an average one bedroom in our county is $1,100. I remember paying $300 when I was in college here, not to date myself too much, but it has not been that long. So it's a pretty dramatic incline. And just kind of understanding some of the myths and the realities about homelessness. There's a lot of misconceptions, a lot of people feel that unhoused people are all in active addiction. The reality is, is that yes, there is a higher level of substance use disorder among the unhoused population, but it's still a minority. It's about 38%. All unhoused people suffer from mental illness. Again, Substance Use and Mental Health Association or Administration report that one-third of homeless adults have mental illness. So again, it is the minority. Offering free services encourages dependency. Access to services like affordable housing, healthcare, job training, they're essential, essential to empowering individuals to regain self-sufficiency. So it's not, it doesn't encourage dependency, it encourages self-sufficiency. And generally that unhoused people are violent. So studies such as one in the Journal of Urban Health show that the contrary is true. Homeless individuals are victims at a higher rate of assault, theft and abuse compared to our general population. And then just to talk about the Moses Lake example, Hope Source operates the sleep center in Moses Lake. A similar model is owned and operated by the city of Moses Lake and, and we provide the, the operation. Demographics of individuals that use the sleep center, they really come from all kinds. We have seniors who use it, we have veterans that use it. And very similar to the studies, about a third of people present with SUD and mental health challenges and actually 20% are employed. So it's not, it's not that a job equals housing. I think we've kind of beat that, but it's the affordability that is causing the homelessness. So we are open from 5:00 PM or 6:00 PM in the evening, people can kind of start lining up and they can come in at 6:00. We have open intakes from 6:00 until 10:00 PM. If you get there after 10:00 PM, you've got to be either escorted by the police or EMTs. Basically people will go, 10 o'clock is what we call kind of our lights out, people go back to their units and then we wake them up around seven in the morning and they exit at eight. We have a, a bus stop that comes one at 7:58 and one at about 8:02. People generally take the bus or they walk from the sleep center to, to downtown or to other resources. Storage of personal belongings. So the way that it works at the sleep center in Moses Lake is that people have free access to their belongings during our hours of operations and then they can lock them up during the day so that they're safe, they're not carrying them around town and they don't have to worry about them being stolen. So shelter rules and enforcement, we have really strict guidelines for what we expect out of our guests at the sleep center. And if somebody doesn't comply, then that will be a violation. If you have certain number of minor violations, that will result in a set time out of the sleep center. Any of major violations would include drug or drug paraphernalia, violence, aggression, aggressive behavior towards staff, then that will generally be a 24 hours out and it escalates kind of as, as that goes. We also will give a minor violation for people being on property when it's non-operating hours. So we, we kind of dispel the, the loitering through that. And it's a low barrier shelter, so we don't ask questions. If you want to come and sleep in a shed with no, no power and you're more than welcome to. We don't expect you to prove that you're homeless, you don't have to have a certain income, we don't expect sobriety or program participation, but what we do get out of that is the ability to provide services and we don't, right? We don't force it on people. And so people have generally been a little bit more palatable to, to what we do offer. Some of the challenges which the inspector touched on earlier, we have an encampment on a, a adjacent piece of property that the property owner allows people to live on. And so that is not enforceable to remove them. And that comes with trash and, and other things. We also are right along a freeway, so we always get trash along the fence line there. But really our guests are the ones who grab a garbage bag on Sundays and we, we clean up the property. And then program outcomes, I shared this in the last meeting, is we have had over 80% success rate from people exiting the sleep center. The caveat with that is that the average length of stay is just over a year. So that means that it takes these individuals time to really build trust in us and in services and to kind of be offered that hand time and time again. And we have had really good success with people moving from the shelter into, into permanent housing solutions.
Thank you, Brittany. I think you're stuck with me for the rest of this here. So, so I want to move on to a little bit about the sleep center. And as has been mentioned, there aren't a whole lot of models in Washington State about this, but what we're trying to do is learn from other people. And you'll hear the word, the Moses Lake model a number of times. Wallowalla also has a, a sleep center. They actually moved to a 24 operation and that's actually operated by a nonprofit. And so we've been trying to learn as much as we can about what's working and what's not working in other communities and making sure we're addressing those issues. So, so when we talk about the sleep center model, we talk about this, this is a temporary, temporary measure essentially we're looking to, this doesn't solve homelessness. This helps mitigate some of the impacts of homelessness. It gets people out and as we mentioned earlier, the numbers are rising at a rate faster than we have housing for. And, and as, as the inspector and Captain Clausen mentioned, we, homelessness has been And and as the inspector and Captain Clausen mentioned, we homelessness has been fairly invisible. I think our law enforcement in our community has been managing it very, very well. But there's also, the numbers are in are are growing over time. And that will be less and less so unless we have options for folks to access the services that we have. So the model with the sleep center is actually individual shelters and this creates better accessibility for people. Oftentimes, people don't want to go into a congregate setting. You've got twenty people in one room that with with slices of a, you know, slices of the floor essentially and in bedding. And so the the individual shelters actually provides access for people that might not be able to be in another room as a number of folks experiencing the sort of mental health issues or mental or excuse me, behavioral health issues. And then again, provides safety and so it's easier to monitor and manage in the outside of a shelter or or a shed than it is an entire group group setting as well. And so low barrier, as Brittany mentioned, doesn't mean no rules. There are there are measures in place to make sure that the the guests and the people using the center actually stay safe as well as the community around. And then and the the model we're looking at to the city or county would not operate this, our staff would not operate this. This would be operated by a contractor. And as we look at models in other communities, we're looking at the operational framework. And some of this was mentioned before, really looking at a year round option as opposed to just a a wintertime option. Overnight only essentially from approximately, and these aren't set in stone, six P M to eight A M. Looking at the numbers of folks experiencing homelessness in our community, we think the the right number of these shelters is twenty five. Although we want to make sure if conditions change over time, we would have the ability on on property to expand as necessary. And then making sure that there are spaces typically, looking at the Moses Lake model, there's a an intake place and there's also a place for service providers to meet with people. One of the advantages of having a place for people to safe or to sleep in a safe manner is that service providers can access folks as well. And ideally, again, other communities have used volunteers for meals. We're hoping to tap volunteers for as much as we possibly can to continue that relationship and really maximize on the the efforts of the community. So some of the numbers you're going to see that we look at are some of are basically, don't include all of those volunteer hours. And then the procedures again, you know, typically these are managed sites, controlled sites with security. And so while people are there, they have security overnight and or staffing. And again, lighting, fencing generally to make sure that the folks inside are safe. And then other communities, one of the things that we've learned is there are ways to help managing some of the loitering or the camping nearby on private property. Other communities have created ordinances that don't allow for private camping camping in a certain radius of these managed sites. And so it's again, keeping folks safe inside and also the community around as well. And so, let's see here, all right. So a number of, we'll go over costs, but one of the questions are, you know, can we afford this? And and I would guess I would propose, can we afford not to do this as we look at how our community is changing? And we have the opportunity to look at something that is very, very specific for Ellensburg. We can do things differently than other communities have done and and we can do things that fit our community specifically. So again, as was mentioned, numbers are changing, housing costs we know are rising. We know that the service, we've talked about the service continuum, there are limited, it's a constrained system. So it takes a while for housing to open up. As the city of Ellensburg, we've actually used a number of tools to increase affordable housing. That is a very slow process and that's going to take a long period of time. And and as mentioned before, we talked about the public health and safety impacts. And so we know that that the visibility over time will likely be increasing as well. With our ad hoc committee and when the council and the county commissioners had voted both in concept to move forward with the sleep center in our community in July of twenty twenty two, we began looking at where can we place this, where can we cite this facility? And we knew it would not be popular. We went through a process with our staff, with city staff and county staff, looking at every parcel of public property and and ruling those out. And so at a certain point, we realized we needed some assistance because we also needed to think about what is the operational funding look like, what is, how much is it going to cost to build this? We needed to have some better numbers. So together we reached out and hired Echo Northwest to create a feasibility study. They helped us look at some of the modeling for the site development costs and looking at a number of different options, the billing costs and then the operational costs over time. So we're going to talk just very lightly about some of those numbers and some of those estimates. So the first thing I wanted to talk about is the site development costs and the the big number is it depends. And so if you're going to build something on property, and again, these are individual shelters. And then if we have a a community intake and a shower and restroom facility, so we're looking at over an acre worth of property to actually cite that. You need water and sewer and electric generally. And so making sure that site development costs include getting utilities to whatever site and and making any other improvements. Most facilities these days have to be ADA accessible. And so looking at all of those, you know, landscaping requirements in the city, we have to follow our own rules. And so making sure that we're looking at the numbers and the costs based on each site. And again, the costs vary as we look through the different sites, you'll see the numbers that we've estimated. All right, that's is not viewing properly. Okay, building infrastructure, our our consultants actually looked at three different models. And if you saw the pictures of the Moses Lake model, those were like the tough sheds or hickory sheds that were actually insulated and people are staying those, right, staying in those. That model has been up for three years that are actually replacing those with what we call the pallet shelter. And so our our consultants looked at, there's a cost associated with the different styles of of sheds available or or. And so one of those is the pallet company and those are the pictures and you'll see some more of those. They're a modular building, they are more expensive upfront and they are less expensive over time because they're very durable, they're, they have some high fire ratings essentially. And they're modular and so if something breaks, you can replace a piece of them. Oftentimes, the tough sheds, you're replacing large, large chunks of them and replacing the entire the entire shed over time too. So the other, the third model was to look at what is, what would it be like if we didn't buy something, if we just rented something? And so we've also reached out to pallets to get better numbers. Their their costs change over time, they're a very popular solution. And a lot of communities that are standing up sleep centers or homeless shelters, they are looking at using that pallet shelter model. Okay, so here's where we get to, and I apologize, our slides are not viewing entirely properly. The operation cost for the year. So the first, I'm going to show you three different options and these were based on the pallet option. And typically what you'll see here is the pallet shelter option. You know, the operating costs are a little bit slightly lower because typically the maintenance is a little bit lower over time on those. And then when you rent renting shower facilities, there are oftentimes a high amount of maintenance associated with those over time. So I know that we had some folks looking at the operating costs. And so we actually made some adjustments to our Echo Northwest. Our consultants actually did not, did not multiply some of the staffing factor. And so we actually made some adjustments. We also reached out to Moses Lake because we wanted to make sure we had a real number to compare this to. So the Moses Lake operating per year is about four hundred and seventy two thousand dollars. And they have, and again, that's for staffing and security, looking at maintenance and supplies and all kind of the all in cost. We actually went back and recalculated the security costs and we actually added in maintenance cost, even though the pallet shelters don't have a whole lot over time, we wanted to add that in. So it was, we had some cushion for a more realistic number. And so again, there's not a perfect science, there aren't a whole lot of models out here about this, but we feel fairly confident that that number is good. And then the next question is, how do we fund this? So right now, a lot of communities, especially in Washington State, are struggling with homelessness. The state legislature has put forth a number of programs. We had an initial discussion with the county looking at the the potential funding split for operating and capital costs and those will be worked out over time. But the what if was, what if we split the the costs for all of these on a fifty fifty basis? Both the county and the city have what we call restricted funds. And so there are funds that come in that are only used for specific purposes. So the city has an affordable housing and related services sales tax. And that's very, very closely managed and can be used for operating and capital expenses. We also have, it's called a state sales tax credit. And we get about about eighty thousand dollars per year, a little bit under. And that's again, based on sales tax and the other between, depending on sales tax over time, between five hundred and eight, seven hundred thousand dollars a year. The county also has special restricted revenue funds. Some people call these the recording fees. And so when you record a document, there's a fee that goes in and a portion of that goes to a homelessness fund, which is mandated by the state. And so over time, we looked over the last few years, the county's revenues in that area are about three hundred to seven hundred thousand dollars per year. And they also have that same sales tax credit, we call it, I believe, the low income housing credit. And that's about ninety thousand dollars per year. Again, the state has stood up, they've stood up a number of programs and they have a couple of different names and they're in a transition. And so Hope Source does access some of these programs. But one of our understanding is that the Moses Lake Sleep Center is a hundred percent funded by the state funds through this program. So again, this is a redistribution of your state taxes that are going back to communities. And so our funding model, we know that we do have local options for funding these and restricted revenues. So they wouldn't be our general funds, wouldn't be new revenues. But our staff would work together to make sure we could maximize any grant funding available for for operating. And on the capital side, so again, this is purchase of property or building costs to purchase the shelters. And basically the same options are available for the city's restricted funds, for the county's restricted funds. Commerce has some additional programs that they're working up and then the federal, and it's actually money through commerce, the Community Development Block Grant is another funding option for the city and a county for capital costs. All right, now to what you've all been waiting for, the site analysis. So initially, as we were looking at properties and working with the consultant, we had, we came down to three properties. And typically, when we're looking for properties as a, you know, a public agency, we typically try to do our due diligence and and purchase property and and once we go public with it, oftentimes the the price can go up. And so when we brought, we had three options that we're looking at with the consultant and Hope Source had stood up late in the process and and said, maybe we can, maybe we can help. So that was, that became the preferred site. In March of this year, the city council looked at a potential agreement with Hope Source to actually cite the the sleep center on the Pathways Project site, which is that twelve hundred Ruby Street. There is a lot of concern about the adjacent uses and businesses. And so the council asked the community, can you please provide some options for us? Can you be problem solvers? And so really, we worked on a public sort of sourcing process, crowdsourcing process from the community. We received in that process between the beginning of, between March and April, about forty three different parcels that we looked at and evaluated, went through a process with our ad hoc committee in a public meeting on April nineteenth and they actually whittled those sites down to the eight sites that you see here today. And you're going to see one is crossed out and I'll talk a little bit about that. So the site search criteria was that we wanted it located in Ellensburg, the urban growth area could be a possibility. It makes it easier for zoning and the the rules that we have and then also for transit typically. The availability, it needed to be something we could do. Our hope was to be able to get a sites up by the cold weather season this year at this point. That's probably not going to have, that is not going to happen, let's be realistic. And then the zoning had to be appropriate and also the parcel size, we were looking for an acre and a quarter, making sure that we had the opportunity to expand. And then making sure that there were, we could identify the adjacent uses and and mitigate the impacts that might, they might experience with a sleep center adjacent. And then again, it have to, had to be accessible. So one of the things when you're looking for property, we have to understand that there's just development and uncertainty. And so if sites have critical areas or flood plains, that's usually extra studies you need to do and maybe extra mitigation like fills and compensatory storage. And so making sure that we take into account the timeline and the additional costs that different parcels would require in order to actually stand up a facility. All right, so I'm going to go through these one by one and I do have a slide at the end. As as the council and county commissioners are talking about this, that actually does, is a grid that talks about the site analysis. And so the first property that actually was on the list was the twelve hundred Pathways property. This last week, Hope Source provided a letter to the city council and I know that's gone public to the community as well, actually withdrawing that site from consideration, concerned about the the impacts. And they are service providers and so they they withdrew that. And so we have, again, folks, I'm sure a number of folks have seen that letter. So that is not a site that's under consideration for this, for this facility. The second is the Mountain Views Four Square Church. And again, this is located off of Mountain View on the south side. This is a property that's owned by the Four Square Church, the entire property is six point three acres. The idea would be to lease a portion of that, sort of in the middle of the open area. The amount has not been determined. Again, this was put forth by a community member and there was some support from that pastor, but also that has not been approved by the the church board. And so so there is no specific lease amount. And we know that as we estimate for just site development costs, we're looking at a little over four hundred thousand dollars. And then the zoning is R S, that's residential suburban and under our code, it would require a conditional use permit. The second or the third option, I guess, it's the second option we'll consider tonight, is the seven oh one South Main. This is one that our staff initially, when we're looking at this, it's, oh wait, oh yes, I'm sorry, seven oh one South Main. Okay, this is one point three acres, it's for lease, this is just south of Lake Ranch at Home, right on Main Street. The lease amount estimate was about seventy eight thousand dollars per year. And that's, I believe, one tenth of the sale price. And so so the site development costs, there is no sewer to the site and so that increases the amount. It also has some some critical areas or excuse me, some flood plain and so would require some mitigation, that is zone C C two, which allows for this use. In each of these photos, you're going to see some little dots and that's sort of the the basic layout of what a sleep center site might look like on that specific piece of property. The fourth site, again, the third one we're looking at is the Helena and Sycamore. And we have a little more information about that tonight. It is five acres, it is owned by Central Washington University. Sorry. Thank you. I'm heavy handed on the on the clicker here today. All right, so Helena and Sycamore. So it's a five acre parcel, potential lease and also it could be a potential own site. Certainly having discussions with Central Washington University. We did receive a letter of support for Central Washington University and citing this in this area. And again, we're looking at the northwest corner of this parcel. Site development costs were initially listed at about three million dollars because in our city code to subdivide, you actually have to do all of the improvements. And there's a road that runs north south in this parcel. And if there's another mechanism that to actually subdivide that property or to do a boundary line adjustment, that that price goes down significantly to probably four to five hundred thousand dollars and maybe even less than that, basically just for utilities. And it's zone public reserve, which is an allowed use in that site. All right, next is. Oops, sorry. Out of order, okay. I'm gonna go backwards a couple. All right, I'm gonna jump to Berry and Canyon Road. So 16.9 acres, it's available for purchase. The purchase price is $2.1 million. Site development, again, in order to use this property and divide this property potentially to, you're looking at over $1,002,000. And then it is in the urban growth area, so it would likely need to be annexed, and we'd have to work through some other, or code, code compliance. Okay, so Highway 97 is a 6.99 acre and... The entire site, it is for sale. We got some additional information. There is a lot that is 1.5 acres available for purchase. The purchase price is raw land, somewhere between $200,000 to $300,000, almost $50,000. Site development and utilities would be fairly expensive for that site, just under $1,000,000. It is zone commercial highway, so that is an appropriate use or allowable use for that site. Now I'll get back on track here. And the Green Avenue site, 15 acres. And again, this is near the West Interchange, available for purchase, $2.25 million, and a little over $600,000 for site development and utilities. And there's some questions that our staff weren't able to answer, it may be more than that. Commercial highway is also the zoning, which is an allowable use. And finally, we have the 303 West Tacoma. This initially was one that our staff had deemed, because it's too small to be feasible use. When we were working with the ad hoc committee, they wanted to bring this back into consideration. So it's here tonight, and I know there's been a proposal from a community member in business to actually do kind of a congregate, or one building on this site, available for lease. And it's also, it is in the flood plain, so would require some mitigation. And then again, the site development and utilities were estimating to be a little over a couple, $200,000. Central commercial two, or excuse me, one, zone, and which is an allowable use. Okay, and then again, I have this to come back to if we need to later. All right, some final thoughts. So you've heard tonight from a number of folks to talk about the sleep center and about sort of the condition of homelessness in our community, what we expect to see for the future, some of the challenges. Just a reminder that, as law enforcement mentioned, this is a tool for them to use. They don't have a whole lot of tools in their toolbox in order to help people. It's pretty hard to get someone out of a warm spot on a cold night and not have a place for them to go. And so we have wonderful law enforcement that serve us every single day. And, and so it's really important that we make sure to give them the tools that they need. The magnet theory, and I don't mean to take this lightly, you know, if you build it, they will come, we've heard that. We, looking at the data out there, and there's a lot of fear about people moving, you know, that, you know, people will be attracted if we have a space for people to, to be. The numbers have not panned out in other communities, as was shared earlier, that we see that, you know, the numbers in communities, it's very consistent, sort of the 80% to 85% range of people are from the communities that's, that are, you know, that they're, that's, they're sleeping in. And so then, you know, the commitment that we're making on this, this is again, a temporary measure. It's a temporary measure to get people into communities. This is a new, it's not a tried and true, there's not these programs that have been out there for decades. But what we've seen is that the communities that have stood up sleep centers and shelters like this, they've had positive impacts. Our law enforcement have been in touch with them, we've been in touch with them. And, and they've, they've had positive impacts on a number of services. And they're really about risk mitigation. There is uncertainty, there are a lot of things we don't know, and there are a lot of things we need to continue to work on to find, find answers for. And so this is, this is an important, and also again, you know, uncertain action. And then again, we, it's really important that, you know, we not do just whatever, what else is doing, that we make sure that this is what this community needs, and that's really in your hands tonight. So we are here, we have our number of members of our ad hoc committee here for council and county commissioners. If you have questions, I know law enforcement is here. We're happy to support any questions you may have.
Okay, we're gonna move to item 3B, which is gonna be a public comment. There wasn't a sign-up sheet, so we're gonna sort of take this sort of in the order that people raise their hand. There are opportunities to do public, okay, gotcha. No, hang on a second, we're just gonna give a couple of rules first. Yeah, you get to go first. So I'm gonna just, just kinda read the rules. So the speaker's comments are gonna be limited to three minutes, and speakers are cautioned not to engage in conduct that disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes orderly conduct of this meeting. And so what I'm asking from you, there are probably passionate opinions about this on both sides. So if we are getting disruptive comments that are sort of against the speaker, that is going to slow the process down, and that would be considered you are impeding. So please allow the speakers to speak, and that courtesy will also be afforded to you. Do not identify yourself as a candidate for elective office. Make any statement or which assists or discusses a campaign or a candidate for elective office or is pro or con against a ballot proposition. And speakers are cautioned not to make comments of a personal, impertinent, or derogatory nature. Mr. Waxman has a couple.
Yeah, just a couple housekeeping notes. When you approach the mic, if you could state your name, and just let us know if you're a City of Ellensburg resident, or if you live in the county. And also note that a public comment is not a question-and-answer time with the commissioners or the city council. It's to get your comments on the record, so we're happy to meet with you at any time, either after the meeting, or we can set up a meeting within our offices. So I think we'll start with whoever approaches the mic first. Oh Cheryl, Cheryl, I think you raised your hand first.
Good evening, my name is Cheryl Chance, I live in the county. And I'd like to talk about a meeting that was held a couple of weeks ago at Howe Homes, when we submitted cards. My card was not chosen to be read at that meeting, however, it was chose to be answered on the city's website. And my comment was about, what are y'all gonna do when Seattle does its sweeps? Well, I'm paraphrasing here, the city answered that they weren't aware of, like, Seattle doing sweeps. Well, I sent every one of you, except Dustin, the article that was published June 5th, about how Seattle has stepped up its sweeps. And we have also talked about when the World Soccer Cup comes in, not '25, but 2026. It's coming to Vancouver and Seattle. There is a contract between the City of Seattle and FIFA, who will be putting on the festivities for this World Soccer Cup. And I don't know if you guys have had a chance to download the 222-page document. In that document, it states that there will be further contracts coming about how the city is going to be held, the festivities will be held safely. They mentioned even talking about having the military there. So when they do their sweep, I want to know, and I have yet to see anybody up here except Dustin, answer my question, what are you gonna do when they're already sending people, like, up to Anshay for $100 to take part of their shelters? Now, let's also talk about when the gentlemen were here from law enforcement, and the bulleted item was, let's hear from law enforcement, the stress on the current system. The officer from EPD mentioned the Ninth District legal case, thank you. Perhaps some of you don't know that that has no longer been, except we have to follow now, but many of you do not know that that case has been referred to, because the person died, is now called Johnson versus Grants Pass. And on April 22nd, the United States District... Oh my God, I can't talk. The Supreme Court heard it, April 22nd, you can go to their website and hear it, it was about four or five hours. And they have told the whole country that they're gonna have this decision made before the end of June, when they go on vacation. So, excuse me, I'm really concerned about people's property rights and our rights to enjoy our community. We have taken in people in my house, 12 people over 47 years. We have approved scenario going down. I don't think that this proved scenario for homeless people, how it's going to be funded in the future, is sustainable by us taxpayers.
Thank you, thank you. Go ahead.
I'm six foot tall, can I pick this up? Hello, fellow denizens of Ellensburg. All of you. My name's Galen O'Connor. I wanna ask, how much does your love cost? Cause my love costed me putting my name on a dotted line, signing my life away to serve you as my country, and my Congress, and my Constitution. A lot of my fellow veterans are homeless, I really care about them. But more than that, I love you. I love all of you. Now, I call myself a perfectibilist diogenian. And unlike diogenes, I'm not willing to get rid of my earthly possessions and live in a barrel. But, you know, syllogism might be my favorite word. All homeless people are not drug addicts, says that in a flyer. Is a temporary shelter a good idea to solve homelessness? No, no it isn't. Your love and your permanent housing are. How much does your love cost? Well, it costs enough to love. Ask yourself. WWJD, what would Jesus do? A fox has a den. Birds of the air have nests, but Son of Man has nowhere to lay his head. Eventually, the meat are gonna inherit this earth. But until that point in time, I hope that you're able to love your neighbors. I was playing chess downtown Seattle just this weekend with some great dudes. Not once in my mind did it cross, oh, this guy's a drug addict. I was a little disappointed, I could see his, his crack, as in, on his back. But, that's my problem. I'm prejudiced. I'm a former Catholic, I'm a former veteran, and I am a former Ellensburg homeless man myself. Winter quarter, 2019, I was living in X22, the gravel parking lot, with a tarp over my window. But now I'm graduating college, and I'm gonna go to a master's program in Monterey. Hopefully, people love one another down there. I'm a success story, I suppose. I hope you can be too.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. Again, just a reminder, please, when you introduce yourself, just let us know if you're a city or county resident.
Yeah, city resident.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Shaftan Metruscu, I live in Ellensburg. I wanna address specifically the Four Square Church site. If you would visit the proposed Four Square Church site, you would see that there are 340 elderly residents at 455-plus locations in close proximity to the Four Square Church. If the pathway site was rejected because of its close proximity to a vulnerable group, then the Four Square Church site is also in close proximity to a vulnerable group, and should therefore also be rejected. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ed Slabodian. I live in Rosewood, the community right across the fence from Four Square Church. We recently formed a HOA, and they've elected me president of the association. So I think I'm probably representing 150 people in our community, 110 residents, and mostly elderly from 70, 80s, some into the 90s. We've got 49 of those people are elderly, single ladies. And they are absolutely terrified that you people are considering putting it right across the fence. They're gonna be there all night by themselves, I don't know what your security is going to be on this so-called fence operation, but I don't think it's gonna be adequate. And furthermore, the, the Four Square Church is also occupied on two sides by the senior citizens, residents of Pacifica and the other one. Anyway. It's sad that the Knights Inn was not chosen, and I'm not against it, but it's a little different for kids, because the, I understand that part of that was because the, they didn't take that one because of the children there. The children aren't there at night, they're there during the day, they're all supervised, and the Knights Inn was gonna be occupied during the night, but that is not relevant at the moment. But the other thing I was going to adjust is the cost of this operation. At the last meeting, it was brought up by a little cue card, the cost of this. I noticed that everybody just fell into a complete silence. And nobody wants to address the situation, because nobody is sure of what the hell is happening. You know, you run across figures very briefly, but you know that they're low, and you say, maybe we can get a grant for this, maybe we can't. And, you know, I don't know how much you can expect the people of this county, and the city of Ellensburg and all of us, to accept, but this is going too far. Now, before the last meeting, we were talking about money, and bill them, and they will come. I don't know, most of you are not familiar with Lars Larson, who is a talk show host, lives in Vancouver, and he talks out of Portland. But anyway, he was talking about this very subject. Several, many years ago, Seattle had 3,000 homeless people. Since that time, with all the money they've spent, which he said presently is over a billion dollars, now they have 16,000 people. Now, you build them, they will come. I personally, I think this whole thing ought to be up before, on a vote in the November ballot, so people in the county can vote whether they wanna go through with this project, because sooner or later.
Sir.
Sooner or later, these people are gonna have to pay for it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Actually, I got her first, sorry, Jessica.
Jessica Carricker, county resident. Ronald Reagan has quoted as saying, "The nine most terrifying words in the English language are, 'I'm from the government and I'm here to help.' But all too often, people forget, he also says in that same paragraph, 'But until we make that transition, the government must act compassionately and responsibly.'" To the community members that are against the Sleep Center, you have forced the hand of our local government to act compassionately and with responsibility because of your indifference to being involved in local politics. You say not in our community, but you have not provided a solution, nor are you getting involved in local committees that make these recommendations months, if not years, prior to this, that affect our communities. We expect the police department to clean up the streets of the homeless without understanding that the police cannot do their job without offering a place to move these individuals to. More importantly, you have forgotten that these are your fellow Americans, fellow Americans that have fallen on hard times, that are self-medicating, which oftentimes results in addiction, or are struggling with mental health issues. struggling with mental health issues. There are over 100 of you here tonight, and currently 17 committees in the county that have or will have vacancies. You could volunteer your time and make a difference in our community, yet you will go home and likely, I fear, forget all about making a difference, once you feel like you've won this battle, and then wonder why in a few months our local government continues to pass agendas that you don't agree with when the recommendations come from these citizen-served committees." To our local elected officials, the sleep center is not adequate. Your formerly homeless committee member on the County Homeless and Affordable Housing Committee has stated in multiple meetings that this is not the answer to help address the issues our fellow Americans are facing. Sleep centers that look like human dog houses around our state have proven to be a money pit and not truly answer the needs for better services in a common area to address the needs we have in our community. How many of you have actually sat down with our local homeless population and asked them what they need to succeed? An report from Hope Source or people from the front line is not enough. Until you meet with these individuals, hear their needs, how will you truly help our community, both in providing a space to sleep that is better than the post office, or transition these fellow Americans into a healthy lifestyle? I ask this question because I have taken the opportunity to speak to our local homeless population, and I have never been scared by any of them. Before spending our tax dollars on a project that you will, that will rot into the ground, I ask that you be the example for what it looks like to successfully take care of our fellow Americans that have fallen on hard times, not continue down a path that simply does not suffice. Heidi, you mentioned in the end of your presentation that you don't have to follow what some of the places in Washington has done with a sleep center. I urge that our community looks at a better long-term option that is going to continue to not just need to be replaced year after year, where more money needs to be, need to be spent, where Moses Lake, fine example, 700-plus thousand. I hope you all take this message and get involved in our community on some kind of committee and make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Jessica. Anyone else wish to make public comment?
Hi, my name is Louise Dematrescu, I live in Ellensburg, I live in Rosewood community. It's a 55-plus community, and it's adjacent to three assisted living facilities around Four Square. I can't think of a less appropriate place to cite a sleep center, unless maybe it's a daycare center. I'm opposed to the Four Square site option, and really, any site that is adjacent to residences. The more I learn about the discrepancies between the official budget estimate, even though you have raised it, I do see that, and Joshua Thompson's research, the less confident I am that the council and the commissioners have a good handle on costs. If you don't have a good handle on costs, what else don't you have a good handle on? I am sure that one thing you don't have a good handle on is the level of, the low level of community support for a sleep center. Am I next?
Yeah.
Okay. Erin Sinclair, city of Ellensburg. Several years ago, the Kitataas Valley Ministerial Association volunteered themselves to run a cold weather shelter for the homeless. When they ran it, it was a few local churches who volunteered space during the winter months. It was small, a small-scale charity, where the churches were able to decide amongst themselves the schedule and locations that they would offer. My guess is that none of the churches were forced to participate in this, and it's likely that the winter schedule and rotating locations kept this a small-scale operation. The biggest difference I see in KVMA's cold weather shelter and the city of Ellensburg's homeless sleep center is choice. They were able to choose every element of their services, including the choice to discontinue offering them, and we want the same thing. We want a choice in where this is built. When the city of Ellensburg focused on the Hope Source property on South Ruby Street, several members of the community spoke up and expressed grave concerns over a location next to a daycare facility, Les Schwab, and numerous other businesses who rely on foot traffic for their success. When you asked us for our input to identify other locations, the community identified 43 or so locations, and of those options, you still found the two most feasible ones to be either a location next to a daycare center, or a location next to our elderly population. Many people have spoken out about the concerns we have for the safety of our children, our elderly, our local businesses, our neighborhoods, and we have asked you repeatedly to choose a location farther away. And the truth is, this community shouldn't have to resort to these member, to these measures. Large public outcry, social media discussions, petitions, legal action, private community gatherings, and news coverage to get you to hear us. In response, the city of Ellensburg, Hope Source, and KVMA have continued to tell us that the homeless are simply locals who are down on their luck, and all they need is a place to sleep at night, a shower, and the ability to fill out job applications so that they can get back on their seat, their feet. I gotta, go ahead, or move ahead. I want to share that my mom lives in a 55 and older community on the west side, where a homeless camp has developed in the area. They have problems with homeless people sleeping on the porches, breaking into unoccupied residences, they have homeless people climbing over the fences and walking around their community, and they've had to hire security to patrol the areas. So I'm asking the city council and county commissioners again today to plan a reasonable location, at a location farther out, at either interchange, at either one of the interchanges, Berry Road and Canyon, Highway 97, Green Avenue, as both are feasible options. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good.
I just, a couple things, at an average of $1,100 a year or a month per apartment, it still comes out to $150,000 less than operating a sleep center for 25 days. Sure, sorry. And then, the police left, so we can't ask them for this, but of the homeless people that are crimes are being committed against, how many of those crimes are be committed by normal citizens? How many are committed by either other homeless people or the drug people around? Not necessarily people leaving their houses to rob the homeless people. The churches did the group thing, and everybody keeps saying that it was a good volunteer thing, and it worked out real well. Why are we doing individual houses, instead of just meeting the emergency needs of the people that are homeless? We could put in some kind of a big center with separated areas, something like that, that would be much, much cheaper to operate than individual housing. If it's an emergency situation, let's treat it like an emergency situation. Give them dignity, give them separated spaces, but not necessarily pay an amount to do this that would cost more than what it would cost to rent people houses. That way, put all the services together, you could separate it, male, female, however you want to do it, in different areas of the building. Have the services for showers, for restrooms, for those things, to give them a place where they could go and have their own space to take care of themselves that way, but still not necessarily live in separate places. I understand with mental illness thing, they have situations where people need to be, maybe have a better, better place to live, or a better area, and maybe they need to go for those folks into a rent situation, that gives them some independence of themselves. And, oh, sure, sorry, I'm not good at this. And why privately run? Why isn't the city and the county doing this, instead of paying private organizations more money, most likely, to come in and do it as a, as a business, than it would cost for, for the city and the county to run some of this by themselves with just wages and taxes? That's...
Great, thank you. Anyone else wish to make public comment, if you could approach the mic?
Hello, my name is Angela Lang. I don't think I need the microphone. There is so much said here tonight, and I know that a lot of people are on both sides of the fence, I'll say. A show of hands, how many signed a petition against building one here in town? A show of hands, how many wanted a change in location from the Four Square and the Happy Feet Academy? I'm asking this question because this is something you guys should have asked a long time ago. We should have had a town hall meeting where we could discuss this. I don't understand why the majority of our town was not involved in this decision that is going to affect our town for a very long time. I'm trying to be respectful. If you guys have a hard job, I get that. But, we are not happy, are we?
No!
Okay, should we have been involved?
Yes!
That's what I'm saying. Anyway, sorry about that. As our elected officials, it is your duty to protect the residents of Kitataas County. It is for the safety of our community, vital businesses, and welfare of our youth and elderly that this proposed low-barrier shelter needs to be stopped before it is built. A low-barrier shelter is one that requires no ID, no background check, you don't have to be sober. You wanted to put it next to a daycare, 350 feet away from daycare. I don't consider that safe, and I don't believe anybody in here believes that to be safe either, do you?
No.
Okay, so, and somebody else was talking about the adult, the elderly communities. It's the same thing, you want to put this type of a shelter in the middle of a community, a community that are vulnerable. There is a, there is a nursing home down in Oregon that was broken into multiple times, and they finally had to hire security to make sure that the people did not come in and steal the medications from the residents there. This is true, this is a sister business, the Prestige over here, nursing home. These are true stories. You can look this up, you can go online, just like the Como News report that came out about the Navigation Center Shelter in Seattle, it's a 74-bed, low-barrier homeless shelter. Nearby businesses resorted to chain-link fences, limited hours, private security patrols, as crimes have increased and safety is a real concern. Drug use and drug sales have been prominent in the neighborhood around the shelter. The Walla Walla website, it states the sleep center was built in a heavy industrial district in 2018, but you're saying we can't do that here. You're saying it can't be in a light industrial zone, which it was, yeah, let me see, I think it's in Moses Lake, actually.
Okay, Angie, your time.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to make public comment?
Julianne Clement, Kitataas County resident. So, at first, I would like to address the safety concerns that we have. So, they're looking at news reports, Burien, this is a story from Como, June 3, where there was a homeless encampment up front of the, or right in, on the property with the city council, or with the city hall, that also houses their police department. And they just had a drug bust, May 21st, where they found that drug rings were selling drugs to the homeless right outside of their own city hall. The Burien residents are very upset about homeless encampments, and their city council's response was, well, who lets their child play out in their yard anymore? I don't think that these are ways that we want to live. Even in Seattle's Chinatown, last year, the residents there felt unrepresented, many at the meeting were not able to speak without a person to interpret for them. They felt unrepresented, people talked about how their businesses were being broken into multiple times. So, I don't believe that there is not something to be concerned about having homeless shelters near businesses, children, elderly people, and other vulnerable places. As far as Eco Northwest is concerned, excuse me, Washington Policy Center had an article about Eco Northwest report advocating destruction of Snake River dams is unscientific and accurate. The headings on this report talked about badly biased survey language, that they admit its survey language is false, that the study assumes people in one location of a state or region are going to have the same needs as those in another, which is where they did their surveys. So they want to take surveys in one place, and they compare it to another place, which is not a good way to run a survey. And then, their claims that they had as far as recreation on the dams have been disproven. So I don't trust Eco Northwest analogy or reports, and I don't think that we should either, because we've already seen evidence that we had numbers that were way lower than what would probably actually be charged. And as far as bias in survey questions, that would be kind of like the same thing as saying, well, if we have homeless shelters here, we won't have to put people in jail. I say we'll have to put people in jail still, and then we'll also have to pay for homeless shelters. We need a robust mental health services and a plan, which is failed policies of Olympia. They have not done anything to help the homeless and decrease that. We need jobs, we need mental health structure.
Thank you.
So, just, we're not stopping the public comment locally, but we're gonna handle everybody in the audience before we handle anybody online, so if you guys see hands going up, we're not ignoring that, we'll deal with it, I just can't see it.
Good evening, my name is Janine Rodine, I'm from Roslyn, so I'm from the county. The word I want to bring up is transition, and I think, I think Brittany mentioned a lot of facts about the Moses Lake Center, and before she said it, I looked it up just to find out, 2023, there are, excuse me, I can't read my glasses, 342 individuals served, 237 had positive outcomes? That can't be, because those people must have been addicted and impossible to live with. But wait, out of those people, 88 actually transitioned to permanent housing. So I want to put a different face on this, and that is the people who are related to homeless people. Well, that would be me. I'm a retired teacher from the University of Washington. My sister was a doctor for 38 years, my other sister was, were on the ferry service for 40 years. Our youngest sister has been chronically homeless for 40 years. I pulled her out of jail, I pulled her from emergency rooms, I've had her live with me, I raised her daughter. She, right now, is 68 years old, and of her years, 40 of them were either on the street or in transitional apartments that didn't have any transitions. There were no services, there was nothing that helped her. She is bipolar, she's been diagnosed schizophrenic. It's not been easy. So I just want you to think about that, and I cannot speak for the people in this room, but I have been in numbers of places, where there's been maybe 30 people or more, and I might get to know them. I found out, they have a cousin who's homeless, or been homeless, maybe an aunt, maybe an uncle. I don't want to speak for this room, but I know that there are a lot of us that are connected to people who need help, need housing. This center, it won't answer all the problems, but having a low-barrier center would have really helped my sister. She's in Everett, she was in Everett. I'm not sure what they're doing, but what they did for her was not enough. She's in an adult family home, where people help her with her medication, take her to doctors, but I like to think what could have happened if she had a center like this in Everett that would have helped her find some services when she was in her 30s and 40s, instead of her 60s like she is now. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead.
My name is Sarah Norton, and I'm from the county, and I actually wasn't planning to speak at all, I'm not prepared, so I hope I can do it. But I just want to say that, you know, I mean, I actually got involved with a cold weather shelter a couple years ago, and so I met all of our homeless population here in town, and, you know, it was a very rewarding experience for me, and it kind of gave me a heart for the homeless, you know, and during, I kind of follow Facebook and stuff, and like, for the last nine years, I haven't seen any negative comments about the homeless people in our town, it's just since this cold, this cold, this shelter's booming up. But, you know, we've been doing this for nine years, and it's kind of the same situation where they get checked in in the morning, then they leave, and they're roaming the streets... and it's kind of the same situation where they get checked in in the morning, then they leave and they're roaming the streets and through town and stuff for, until they arrive back at night to have a place to sleep. And you know, they were in churches and, and as far as I know, I mean, the churches weren't having needles all over the place and they weren't having garbage all over the place. And some of these churches had daycare centers in them and, and I never heard of problems. I mean, maybe there were a couple of problems. I don't know, but it wasn't a, you know, very large problem. And so I don't, you know, I, I, I just am kind of bewildered by this, but actually, I mean, I, for me, the cost of this is, you know, I mean, I heard a cost analysis that was much higher than what was being predicted for this center. And it's just crazy. Like if you have government involved, how much things cost, you know, I mean, and it, it seems, I mean, it, it, you know, the cost for twenty-one people that are homeless and we're talking maybe millions of dollars, you know, and I mean, so that is really a real consideration. But, um, but then at the same time, I wish people would, you know, do their part too, you know, I mean, did you volunteer at the cold weather shelter? And I actually befriended a homeless man. And I was able to help him get an apartment. And he was one that was roaming the streets that everyone probably recognized. And it took him over a year. I, I mean, I took him around to get assigned for, you know, signed up for low income housing and it took a whole year for something to open up. And you know, he's actually, it's been nine months now. He's doing fine and he had a mental health illness. Unfortunately, this person had his own story. I mean, he was actually a college professor and he got struck down by mental health disease. You know, and he's, he was roaming around homeless for twelve years. Well, now he's in an apartment, but it took a whole year for that to open up. But I helped him a lot with that. I mean, he didn't have an address. He didn't have a phone number. He didn't have access to the bank accounts. He, you know, he didn't have
Your, your time limit.
So, um, I just hope that, you know,
Thank you.
His community comes together.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for letting me speak. I guess you didn't really have a choice, but here I am. So I'm Logan Denlinger and I'm one of the owners of Happy Feet Academy. And I had zero intentions of speaking tonight. Um, especially since my primary concern through this whole conversation has been the pathways property. And since Hope Source has attracted that as an option, my immediate like emergency status priority has fallen a little bit. It doesn't mean that I don't care about this project. I think it's fair to say that for every person in this room, no matter which side of this particular fence you stand on, or if you're sitting on the fence, however that looks in your mind, homelessness isn't going away. Hard times aren't going away. People being in trouble aren't going away. And Mr. Elliott said something at one of the first city councils in Ellensburg that I ever attended to. He said, we do things the Ellensburg way here. And he's right. We have a unique community here that does things a little bit differently. We always have. You might look at me and I'm the young buck in the room. That's fine. I just turned thirty. I have experience in some things. But I grew up here. I was born and raised here. I was born at KVH Hospital. I have lived here my entire life, other than when I left for college for a few years. We do things the Ellensburg way. That means we help our neighbors. We pick them up when they've fallen. And sometimes the price tags are astronomical. Yes, absolutely. Tonight, the decision that faces the Board of County Commissioners, the City Council and everybody really is what level of support are we willing to give our fellow humans? Now for me, when it was safety risks for my business and the kids that are there, I'll be readily admit that I wasn't quite as willing to give as much. I felt threatened. I think that that's a normal response. I've also sat in the back of the last two of these meetings and just tried to retain as much information as I could. But as you guys, the decision makers of our community, listen to the other members of our community, take into account the vulnerable populations, no matter who they are, whether it's elderly, kiddos, what that looks like. The cost is astronomical. Is there other options that maybe we should reconsider with more community involvement? Is there a private investor that's waiting in the wings that says, hey, you know, I've got this ten million dollars that's just in, maybe I could do some good with that. I don't know. I don't have ten million dollars. I wish I did because I would happily be involved. Uh, speaking of being involved, both the city and the county, I would love to be involved in committees in any, any way that that looks like as a resident of the county. I would love to be involved in local politics and help where I can. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Charles Johnson. I'm gonna hold it. Um, Ellensburg resident. I would have come dressed differently if I was expecting to speak, but I wasn't. So I wrote down some of my thoughts. Um, I've attended a couple of meetings, but after watching the presentation and becoming more informed on the topic, um, I feel that the sleep center that is being proposed isn't very adequate. It seems as if you want to create a fancy, more structured homelessness camp. I think this is a step in the right direction, but definitely not the solution. Um, I ask all of you up here, have any of you worked with homelessness populations before? Um, have you spoken to them? Have you worked in rehabilitation, been service providers, caseworkers, or worked in mental health, all populations and groups of people who do regularly work with homelessness? Um, and I ask you to speak with the homelessness population in this county, um, similar to my neighbor earlier. Um, and ask them what it is that they need and speak with these professionals to, and work with these groups to find a better solution than glorified tents that look like pods. To the community, um, I'm extremely disappointed to hear, uh, you all be so close-minded and unneighborly towards your people who are down on their luck. Um, I coming here have been integrated into this community and brought in and welcomed by so many people, but seeing you all kind of turn a blind eye to people who desperately need the help of their neighbors, um, is extremely disheartening. I also ask you, and I would like participation for this question, um, have any of you lived on the West Side? Good, good. So those of you who have lived on the West Side know what the homelessness population is like. Those of you who have not, and I'm from the West Side, um, I wonder if you all are the ones constantly referencing the homelessness population over there because it's extremely different. And part of the reasons that they, part of why they have so many issues with their homelessness populations over there are from lack of involvement or poor involvement from their local governments. And they're extremely large populations. Uh, Seattle, Tacoma, other communities such as these are metropolises of industry, arts, innovation, and large urban areas, which of course come with large homelessness populations. Um, I just did like some quick Googling because of course I wasn't expecting to speak. But the census for twenty twenty-two in Seattle was seven hundred and fifty thousand people. And of that, only about twelve thousand were documented as homeless. So of course, there's going to be more out there. But when you put sixteen thousand against seven hundred and fifty thousand people, it's not that big of a number anymore, is it? So I just consider, you know, sitting here, looking at both sides, I've come to realize that the problem is not just city council not listening to you all. The problem is also you all, because you're not being neighborly towards one another. You're turning a blind eye towards all these people that need your help. Similar to what he was saying earlier, you know, there's so many people who are veterans or who, you know, were having a normal life. Have you ever questioned whether or not you were going to be able to make rent? Have you ever questioned whether or not you were going to feed yourself? You know, those possibilities homelessness can happen to anyone and it can happen to you and expect, ask yourself how you would like to be treated in that situation. Thank you.
Thank you. You're at time. If I could just ask that, uh, public comments made at the city council and county commissioners and not the audience. Okay, over this mic.
So, here we go.
Could you state your name?
Uh, yeah, my name's Andy Clemmons. I'm a county resident, longtime Ellensburg resident. I only left to go to college, very similar to Logan. And I have a few things to say. It's time to set the record straight. Ambiguous and soft language doesn't work. You misconstrue it. You misunderstand it. You don't know what's being said. Uh, accusations that we don't care about our, our fellow citizens, it's all wrong. I'm here for the little old ladies. I'm here for the children. I'm here for the veterans. I'm not here for the indigent transients. And that means poor drifters. I don't want poor drifters floating into my town. I don't want them bust in. I don't want them welcomed. I don't want them around. People that are not from Ellensburg with no home, no money, no family and no friends. I don't know if they should come to Ellensburg and expect the red carpet treatment. Few weeks ago, I was told that, uh, this was back when the, the Happy Feet, uh, and the Nights End thing was going on. I was told that they were thinking about putting a homeless shelter in the Nights End. And I should go down to Happy Feet and see what I could do. Well, I did. I did. And on that day, three people from this up here on here, they showed up to assess the property and to basically, I guess you could say, sell Logan on, on a good, it's such a good idea to have a homeless shelter right here. And here's some of the words that I heard. They view it as a privilege to have this type of shelter. And they do a really good job policing themselves. Well, I worked in the criminal courts division in Los Angeles about thirty years ago, and I can tell you they don't. They do not police themselves. They're terrible, terrible residents. You don't want them. They have nothing to lose and everything to gain. Okay? So I made this sign. It says, indigent transients do not police themselves. And I'd sure like you guys to look at that. Okay, the information you gave us from Eco Northwest was flawed, false, incomplete, ambiguous and wrong. Do your own research. Get it right. How much time do I have left? Good. Because if you don't, the people are going to make you do it right, one way or another. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll go over to this mic. Hold two. Hello. Peter Stone, county resident. Um, I'm going to address the council because I would like to commend you for the incredible due diligence that you have done in this process. It's obviously a hot topic and I know that there are many people, um, who are very passionate about it. I would like to, um, state that, you know, I am a new newcomer here, three years coming, and I did get involved. I'm on the Affordable Housing Commission, but I'm speaking as a community member and not a commissioner. Uh, so there are those opportunities to be involved and I would encourage people to do so. Um, I don't understand people's reactions are saying that the, the government is forcing things on them. They're here tonight. They're listening. They're doing an incredible amount of research. There's a lot more to citing something than just simply, uh, who's the neighbors, as you've seen in the presentation today. So I would also want to remind all of the community members that every one of us, myself included, are one natural disaster or one something away from being homeless yourself. It is not a guarantee that you are all going to just be happy, home-housed people the rest of your life. My own sister recently, uh, her longtime partner suddenly came down with Alzheimer's in the space of a year. Luckily she, he's got her for support, but believe you me, the system here is broken. We know that. His mental health issues are costing an incredible amount of money. And if he didn't have her, um, he's got very little family and what he does have, we won't talk about. They're not much help. And he would be out on the streets tomorrow, another one of those, what do you call them? Transient indigents? To me, it's a bunch of, it's a lot of perception. Um, you know, homeless people are human beings. They have names and they have backgrounds and histories, all very different. Yeah, some of them are addicted. Some of them have mental health challenges. Sure. Some of them simply had a bad stroke of luck and now they're on, down on their luck and they need our help. Is this the best solution? I don't know. I really don't. It's a good solution and I think it's got potential because they'll have services that are available. Whether they'll make use of them, I don't know, but there would be services available and that is something that is very key. So I appreciate your time. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, go ahead.
How are you doing? My name is Michael Carricker. I am a county resident. I also serve on the homeless and affordable housing committee. I've heard a few people talk about what transient and homelessness looks night, looks like. A gentleman, uh, eyes on, talked about homelessness before. I as well have been homeless multiple times in my life. I'm, I'm apparently what a lot of people fear living near you. I had dreams and aspirations as a child, but unfortunately my single mother found herself in a lot of situations that I had no control of and she had no control of either. Found herself living out of cube bins, uh, and, and different, even as of late, coming out to Washington, the job that I had provided my housing. Uh, through fickle means, I lost that job, also lost my housing. I, I was nearly homeless again at thirty-some years old, being a central college grad. Way to go. What we need to realize here is that a lot of these people, and I know that we're, we're afraid of touching the unclean and getting it on us. That's the biggest problem is that these people need help. They need that hand. They, they, some of them don't even like myself. I didn't want a hand up. I just wanted an anchor to grab onto so I could lift myself up. So, so who's going to be that person that, that puts it out there for someone else? We can call, there, there's a, we have a community here. We don't, businesses will dictate and profit from, if you pay for something, you'll get more of it. What we can do is spread love. We, we can watch out for our neighbors. We can realize, hey, let, let's not be scared of this guy. Maybe he is, everyone remembers Kevin. When Kevin was going off and yelling at passersby, who would want to approach him? I wouldn't. But he's one of the kindest people that you ever had a chance to talk to, if you took the chance to approach him, talk to him with help. Now I understand he's doing well. So why can't we do that for more of these people here in this town? Why does it fall on the government to take care of it? We all have to open up our wallets and spend more in tax money. Problem is every time we up those taxes, who does that hurt? The people at the bottom. So you're going to just exacerbate the problem. I don't have a solution here. I just want to put a face to what homelessness looks like. I'm a business owner here in town. I fear not having a home. I do pretty well for myself. I have sound, fairly sound mind. I have a sound body and a strong work ethic. And I, I still live with that fear because it always looms over your head once it's happened. It can happen again. It can happen to any one of you. So open your hearts, open your arms and look at the people that need help.
Thank you. We'll go here and I keep missing Dr. Larson. I'm being told you're raising your hand.
Am I okay to go?
Yeah, go ahead.
I hear a lot of talk about help that's available, but one of the things that concerns me is if you live in this town.
Sorry to interrupt.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Connie Anglia and I'm an Ellensburg resident. In fact, I live in Rosewood.
Okay.
Well, if you live in this town and you need to schedule a doctor's appointment, you have to schedule sometimes months out. And if you, if you needed a mental health, uh, appointment for one reason or another, you are scheduling three months out unless you need to, you need to be hospitalized. And I'm concerned about where this help is going to come from, where, where the, I, I agree that these homeless people need something other than a, a roof over their head. But I don't know where the infrastructure in this town is supported is at this point in time, since COVID. We don't even have enough doctors to serve the people that are here right now. And I'm, I'm worried about that. And then the other thing I want to mention is I live in Rosewood, so I'm a little bit biased about, um, my safety. And in the last few years, I've become, I personally have become a lot more mobile than I was before. And whether it's a real fear or a perceived fear, but I, I have to let my dog out at midnight. I walk outside. I let my dog out. I am thinking about, am I going to be safe doing that if just less, you know, one of my neighbors practically is this homeless center? And I'm thinking about how many of us are going to feel compelled to arm, you know, get a gun in our house. I mean, honestly, you do not want a whole bunch of seventy-year-olds managing guns. So I'm just, I mean, I, I, those are my concerns. So I'm just, I mean, those are my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead and recognize Dr. Larson.
Good evening, city council and Board of County Commissioners, Mark Larson, City of Ellensburg. I just want to say thank you for looking at this problem. My younger brother, who's 62, has been working on homelessness his entire career, 34 years. And so I am aware of how difficult of a problem that it is. I'm aware that no solution is perfect. But to put our heads in the sand and pretend that it's not going to happen in Ellensburg is just a, is just wrong. I work at the hospital. When I send people home from the hospital, it's one of the hardest things of working at KBH is figuring out where people need to go. And not just the people that have to go to the nursing home or the person that doesn't, that has dementia, that has nobody at home to take care of them. But almost every month that I work, I have to figure out what to do with one of our residents who's homeless. They're either living in their car, they're living behind Fred Meyer. And these are people that most of us would recognize as neighbors. And so I'm not sure that, that the sleep center is the right answer, but at least it's moving forward in a direction for a problem that's not going to go away. So I don't, I'm going to just take my last minute to say that I have not always agreed with Jessica Carricker. She and I have had some difficult times the last four years, but I have to say that she's entirely correct, that we all need to be involved, that there's lots of places for us to volunteer there. When we had the homeless, the cold weather shelter, there were people to be, places that we could be involved. And I think we all as community members, as, as elected officials, need to be more involved in this. And the other thing that I have to agree with Jessica on is that we have to engage with people who are homeless. They, they are us. They are our neighbors. They're our family members. And so, thanks, Jessica.
Okay, thank you.
Barbara Pickett, city resident. I have a concern about just the setup of putting folks in sheds and then releasing them to wander the streets. I have known and do know some folks currently in Ellensburg that are homeless or have been homeless. And I really can't imagine the feeling of a young woman being kicked out of her house. She has lots of issues, problems. She doesn't drive. She lives out in the country. How would that feel if her, if her, where she was placed was in a shed by herself? And then released to wander the streets? I just don't think it helps. A lot of folks in our, in our community that need help need more than that. Another fellow I know right now who is homeless, has major medical issues, very serious ones. He can't get help. And he's, he can't work, so he hasn't been able to afford his, his place to live. So again, why would you put somebody like that in a shed? By, by themselves? To me, it's cruel and unusual punishment. And I think, you know, we have a great community. We have talented people. We have a university. We have talented and compassionate people. I don't think we should assume that anybody doesn't want to help our neighbors here. We're in a small town and we want to help each other. But I just don't think the solution is putting people on sheds. And I think let's get together and, you know, find a new solution to this very serious problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pat Keller, 6530 Wilson Creek Road. Thank you, council and commissioners. I am 303 Tacoma Street. Number eight on your list, number one in your hearts. I am offering a path forward that's in the public record. 116 pages. I'll hit a few highlights. And one of the requirements was that it needed to be available by first of May. Mine's the only property that was available the first of May. It's available today. The term is a monthly lease. The rate is $3,000 a month, monthly. I would require mitigation. One would be that it's a 24/7 emergency shelter. The other is a mitigation fence along the alley. And then I'd require a weekly good neighbor meeting until you don't need them anymore. My plan mitigates risk and mitigates costs. Well, how do you know that? Well, there's an individual named David Reynard. He's the RPM president, principal in charge, the application. He runs a little organization that puts these things together. You can go on the website and pull out their stuff. He's done Skid Row in LA. He's done San Francisco. I guess there's a thing at Yakima. He's done a project down in, for the Yakima Nation. They've been doing this for a very long time. They're pros. Okay? You need to reach out. It's time to move forward. Pick the site and bring in a pro. Somebody that does this for a living, somebody that has documented successes. Not speculation, not huts in some industrial zone. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to make public comment?
You have one online.
Yeah. Okay, well, I want to make sure we get everyone in person first, and then one more down line.
Hi, I'm John Pickett, husband of Barbara. I can say that I have been, this was, has been a very learning experience for me tonight. And the wisdom and the intelligence and the compassion of the people here who have spoken, I'm truly moved by, and I thank you. I think we are trying to do something. I'm not quite sure what. I'm not quite sure that low barrier housing is the answer. I have, my greatest concern is with the relate, with the situation of the drugs that are allowed, that sobriety is not an issue. I believe that if you can treat people who are sober, I think you've got a much better chance of having success than, than allowing people to come in and not give them the adequate treatment that they need before they come into a low barrier shelter. My, that's my, my belief. So I'm, I'm concerned about the drug situation, the treatment that people are receiving. We know from tonight that there are 38% of the people have drug issues that are in the low barrier housing. I think that that's a fluid issue. I think that you could have a lot more people that would have drug issues, and I think they need treatment. I think they need treatment before they get help to get back on their feet. I think these are two different things altogether. So please consider other options. Please consider something that will help us come together as a community rather than what I'm, I feel a kind of an alienation or a kind of an isolation, a kind of, you're either with us or against us. And I think what we need is unity. I think we need somebody, a leader, to address the community. Bring us together, help us to help other people. Thank you.
Thank you. Sure.
I'm going to take my Hope Source hat off, and my name's Brittany Bushwari. I live in Kidattas County. I think the solution to homelessness is to house people, right? Give them a house. Easy. Permanent supportive housing, in my opinion, is a solution to homelessness. However, like Heidi mentioned earlier, housing takes time. So even if we decided today to press go on housing for 25 people at $1,100 a month, it would be five years before that solution was viable. The reality is, is that one year sleeping on the street takes 22 years off of somebody's life. The reality is, is in Kidattas County, last year, somebody died sleeping outside because there wasn't adequate shelter. It is a humane thing to do to provide emergency shelter for people who have no place to stay. They're staying in our community because this is their home. This is their neighbors. This is where they've grown up. This is where they have support systems and resources, and that they are comfortable. I have not, I've lived away from home, and I have had a yearning to come back. I know what it's like to be a part of this community, and I want to be a part of it. And luckily, I have the financial means to have housing. Not everyone is in my position. And there are not any long-term viable solutions right now. And I think that this is a way forward, that is a temporary solution, that could be a road to a longer-term solution. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else in person wishing to make public comment?
I'm Cassie Waterston, and I live in the county. I have a heart for homeless. I think that it's unfortunate that people find themselves in those situations. And I do think that there's a solution to fix everything. No. I think that this solution is one of the worst solutions you could come up with. I own a local business. I have two little boys that come with me to work almost daily. And one of the locations that you're talking about putting this up at is right down the road. So I'm going to have to make sure that my children are not allowed outside unless I'm out there with them because you guys are going to bring people in, yes, to give them a bed, but then there's no regulations and there's no, like, for example, one of the things that was said was if they have, if they violate somehow because of drug violence, et cetera, they are kicked out for 24 hours onto the street down from my business where me and my children are at, where three other women work with one male on occasion. So if this is like some form of safety for, if I have to choose the safety of somebody who's just kicked out of a sleepless or a sleep home because they are on drugs or violent or one of those things, or my safety and the safety of my family and my children, my small children, I'm going to choose me and my children. I think that there's ways you guys could help. I think that there's solutions. I don't know if they are. I'm not good at this, any of this. But what you are proposing is simply not a good solution. No matter where you put that, no matter whose home you put that next to, no matter whose business you put that next to, if it's not regulated and you don't know what's happening within those walls, and as soon as something you don't like happens and they're put out on that street, you are putting everybody in that area in harm's way, and it's not right. And so I guess my begging, pleading thing would be, please don't put in one of these sleep centers where it's got this little, yeah, this regulation. There's, you're not setting us up for success. It's not something, it's, for me, it's not a place that I want my children to be when they grow older. If this is the direction we're headed in because statistics have shown where this leads, and I don't think that it's good. And so I would ask that you guys reconsider what you're doing.
Thank you. Anyone else in person wishing to make public comment?
Sorry, I'm tall as well. Can you hear me? Yeah. Okay. My name is Jessica Cranefield, and I am outside of the city of Kidattas. I was not going to speak, but I do have a few questions. I know you can't answer them. But as we're going forward, looking for a solution, I kept hearing that there was going to be services offered, but it doesn't say what services are going to be offered. In addition, it sounds like that it's just going to be at night. So are services going to be offered at night? I would also like to see local organizations get involved, like the KCRCO, the Kidattas County Public Health Department, the Syringe Exchange. We have amazing organizations and partners that could offer, help offer solutions. And that way, it's a, it's a group effort within the whole community. In addition, it doesn't sound like there's heat in the sheds. So in the wintertime, when it's negative degree temperatures, what, what happens to these people that are staying there? And also, are we going to be looking at housing for families as well, or is it just single individuals? Because I know that there's waiting lists for, well, everywhere for all of affordable housing. So those are just some of my questions as you're moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cody Swallow. I live here in the city limits. I'm just going to point out a couple of things that I think is something to look into. If people are in there at night, but they're not in the day, when do situations happen, night or day? I'd just be curious on something like that. I grew up in Yakima County, and I've seen it change a lot. I've seen the infrastructure and the money that's been dumped into North First Street. I mean, this problem brings a lot of money, and a lot of people get rich off of it. It doesn't seem quite right. Seems like we're facilitating a problem instead of getting in front of a problem. I would encourage the amount of money that we're going to spend on something like this, how do we get in front of the problem? How do we make rent cheaper? How do we make it more affordable to buy groceries? How do we get people jobs? There's a lot of people here in the community that know farmers or this or that. How do we get these people jobs? It just, it doesn't quite make sense that we're going to put a Band-Aid over the problem instead of fix it. Also, on top of that, the community leaders, how is this not going to turn into something like Moses Lake? I'm texting all night with people that I know in Moses Lake, people in Yakima. That problem has grown, and yes, if you build it, they will come. But are you guys going to stand strong for this community and keep this solution for people in this community? And are you going to push back for when that starts bringing in people from outside of this community? And that is, that probably is my biggest thing that I see happening is we can, we can do our damnedest to make this community good. But how do we push back? And that, that's up to you guys because you need to be working with Moses Lake and Yakima and Seattle to make sure that we're not letting other people's problems come over here. So it's just, I'm getting new into this game, and this is one of the fir, this is the first time I've showed up here, but you know, I'm busy out there grinding, trying to do what I gotta do to make sure that I'm paying for my family and stuff like that. But I guarantee you, you will start seeing more people in this community get involved. And you keep, things like this, it's just going to keep happening. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, you guys, this is the section for public comment, and we're going to, we're going to discuss this after we, we close out the public comment, according to the agenda.
Okay, anyone else in person? Let's see if you can do this. You want to go to, okay, we're going to roll the dice and go internet.
Can you guys hear me?
Anne, are you, I think you believe you're on.
Yeah, this is Max Anderson. I live in the county just outside the city limits. I'm the guinea pig here, so just making sure that the audio works on, on Zoom. I have a problem with this and I think that, I think most people would probably agree, there needs to be a solution. I think we're all in agreement there that, that this is a problem that our community is gonna be facing. There's nothing we can do to prevent it, right? Housing is becoming unaffordable. People are moving around. It, it's a problem that we didn't ask for, but we're gonna have to solve. The biggest issue that I have is I'm not seeing anything presented so far with fidelity towards the data of who we're serving. There's not been any sort of legitimate data provided by this group to the community. We're looking at self-reported data, which any of the law enforcement members who are up there on the stage will tell you is usually bogus and bunk because people don't tend to tell you truthfully when they're doing illegal things, right? So I would say the numbers are definitely skewed on self-reported substance abuse. The other issue I have is I've seen no plans presented to the community on what a monitoring and evaluation plan looks like. There's been no definition of success. Nobody has said, this is what we're trying to accomplish and this is what winning looks like. This is what success looks like. And frankly, it's like we're trying to put a Band-Aid on a severed limb, right? We're taking a, a half-solution approach to this so that, yeah, we can have some housing so that from a legal perspective, we can then enforce no camping ordinances. That's not solving the problem. That's not doing anything. We're just putting up some, some shacks. We're putting people in them at night and calling it a day. That doesn't solve homelessness and that doesn't make the community any safer. So I'd ask this committee and what if, what quite a few people have pointed out is, let's take a macro approach. Let's zoom the aperture back out and look at, how should we do this in a way that actually works, has metrics that can be measured, that we can build against areas where we can look for improvement and areas where we can say, yeah, this is sustainable, this is working. I don't see that. It hasn't been presented and I think that that's the biggest issue here. So let's pump the brakes. Let's take a look at, are, is this actually the best solution for our community or should we be doing something different? Because I don't think anybody here, there's been people that have said the community doesn't care and is taking a, you know, an apathetic look at their neighbors. I don't think that's true. I think everybody who showed up today proves that the community is very invested in solving this problem and finding a solution. We just don't think that the current solution proposed is good enough. So I'll end there. Thank you.
That went way better than recent internet issues. So, thank you. Anybody else?
There are no more online.
Okay, we're gonna close out the public comment section and we'll move on to item 3C, which is a discussion amongst the council and commission members on a request to affirm the sleep center project sort of conceptually. And I'm guessing, I actually don't know the way you guys operate. From our perspective generally, we, we make a motion and I'm thinking maybe put a motion on the table to approve or deny whatever we're gonna do. And then we, we have that conversation and maybe concurrently you guys could separately open the conversation and then we can have a conversation and vote. A joint discussion. Who? I can hear myself. All right. Sorry. All right. I'll stay right here. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense to me.
Okay. So, do you guys wanna go first?
Who's just talking about making a joint, an individual motion? It's a little awkward of a meeting since you have county commissioners and city council. And so we were talking about doing a motion on each side just so the sake of discussion so we can talk about it jointly. So I would entertain a motion from the county commissioners.
I'll move to it first. Is that, is that what we're looking for?
Yes.
I'll go ahead and second for discussion.
Okay, we have a motion second for discussion.
Council. No, they moved, they confirmed.
I would move to see council affirm the concept of a sleep center for Ellensburg.
Okay, so we have a motion second to affirm the sleep center project for the city council. And so I think we can engage in a joint conversation and then we'll take independent votes. Sure. Okay. Should we open it up for discussion?
Yeah, I guess I'll, I made the motion, so I will speak first and I appreciate the public comments tonight. I will say that I'm not on Jessica Carrick's Christmas card list either, but, but I, I also want to express the appreciation for a quote from Ronald Reagan that she pointed out, but another one which is also lost, I think, in this day and age of travel politics. The person who agrees with you 80% of the time is a friend and an ally and not a 20% traitor. This is a, and by the way, I wanna, I wanna say to this crowd, you clapped for everyone that came up here. And either half of you weren't clapping or we still have a sense of decorum and civic pride within our area. And if it was half, then this is a, this is a split, split house. This is a difficult position to be in as, as a decision maker. And, and we've, we've talked about what does it mean to, to solve this problem? Does it mean not to let people in? Does it mean to, to say we will not have unhoused people in this town, whether by, by choice or by actually finding a roof for everyone that needs it? We're not gonna solve homelessness. Let's be, let's, let's be perfectly honest here. This will not solve the problem. This is a, this is a degradation of society. It's an, it's an economic issue. There are far too many factors to say that, that we are solving homelessness in this community. It was here 50 years ago. For those of you who may have read a post that I put on Facebook, I was a kid in, in the public library here and there was a, there was a homeless gentleman who used to come in and read the paper. It, it, it has not changed. But somehow, because of the quantity of it, it seems that, that our, our positions have, have become more polarized around it and, and what is perceived to be the, either the, either the consequences of helping or not helping. I will say that I am, I am in support of a sleep center and, and I will tell you why. Because first and foremost, we have to have the tools for our law enforcement to enforce community norms and values. And if, if we do not have that, how can we expect to have any sort of predictable path for, for not only the city of Ellensburg, but our county as well? The, this is a, this is a short memo, 10 pages, really trying to, to go over some of the, some of the inner workings of the Martin, Boise, Johnson, City Grants Pass, even others, Coalition of Homelessness versus the city and county of San Francisco. There are so many nuances to trying to enforce a public camping ordinance in this day and age. You gotta start somewhere. You, you have to have some sort of option and where it's sided, we can work through. We can talk about these challenges. We can talk about how it's done. But you have to have the tool at some point to be able to do it. If you don't have the tool, these guys over here don't have the ability to enforce the law. So those who are calling to expect that law to be enforced will not get the satisfaction that they want and we're right back up here saying, do something about it. So we've gotta start somewhere. And in government, it's continual improvement. Sometimes we do have to start and work our way through it. Yes, we can talk about the cost. The cost is, is an absolute critical piece of this, but let's be honest, there is a funding source for this in our restricted homelessness fund, which is paid for by recording fees, which is mandated by the state. Now, if we wanna start building low-barrier shelters, or excuse me, no bar-, high-barrier shelters, meaning you, you, you've gotta be sober or you've gotta work for it, we lose that funding. And then we can build whatever sort of, whatever sort of homelessness solutions, solution that we want to for this county and this city, but we're paying for it 100%. And that's, that's, that's the challenge of this. We are in a position, it's much like COVID, where many people said, just ignore it, just forget it, you know, tell those guys to pound sand. But we are still a subdivision of the state as a county and the city as well, has their own lawful pieces that, 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 that they have to fulfill. I think I'm, I'm just gonna end this by saying, it's a start. It's a start that we have to go through. If we need to change it, if there is, if, if, if there are issues surrounding additional people that, that exceed the, the beg count, because that's gonna be a challenge too. Yeah, there's, there's, I, I think a definite concern that what happens when, when it's filled? What do we do then? Because then we can't enforce the laws. The Supreme Court needs to rule on this. I'm gonna say that. The Supreme Court needs to rule. We can go through the process here of, of going through a, a side selection, but at the end of the day, we've gotta have what I would consider to be the final version of what's gonna be in here. But I don't think that the idea that the Eighth Amendment is gonna be ignored of criminalizing someone's existence in the cold, as the Martin, Martin case said, the, what was that? That phrase, I think that was, that was pretty powerful. The universal and unavoidable consequences of being human, trying to exist, that's not gonna go away. We have to find a middle ground through it. We don't have to make it comfortable, but we do have to give a path out for those who truly want to, who, who are ready to make that step. And not, not everyone's gonna be ready to make that step. It will take time. But, but you wanna call the, what's, what's the success rate? Finding roofs for people that, that are, are ready to make that transition. This is not a, not an easy discussion, but I certainly appreciate the amount of, I think, polite interaction tonight. So thank you for your support of your fellow citizens regardless of which side they stood on this issue.
Thank you. Did you have any comments?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make my comments. So I support this motion for a couple of reasons. One, because it's, we aren't deciding on anything here tonight. We are affirming that we want to move forward with something. And what I heard early on and what I support is that we want a locally supported solution, something that's supported by people in the community. And I think that's still to be decided exactly what that looks like. And also, there are, you know, there is a, a desire from many people in the community that we've heard from over the last couple of years to have some sort of law in place to, to deal with complaints in the community. And there is nothing because of what we, what we don't have that is enforceable. And lastly, there's a lot of people that mentioned, you know, engaging and interacting with those who are homeless. And I, I wrote down a couple of notes and about people who live here. I, I don't, I'm not gonna lie, I don't have a, a lot of people I know that are homeless, but I could count four people that I know pretty well that are homeless. One of those people did die while they were unsheltered. And two of those people are from multi-generational families that live in Kidittas County. So they didn't move to Kidittas County. They, their families have been here for generations and they are, have been homeless.
I think it's all well said, so I'll kick it over to the city council.
Counsel, are you comfortable going first, Josh? Just work down the line or would you rather not? For discussion amongst the council. Go ahead, Josh.
I've wrestled over this one a ton. The first thing I acknowledged at the beginning of this process is that both sides have hearts. I don't think any one side necessarily says, turn the back, turn a blind eye. I'm certainly not the person that does that. You know, I do it in my own ways. I keep Fred Meyer gift cards in my Jeep to hand out randomly on the street. I bought dozens of coffees, I bought meals. And so I try to do what I can in that, that small way. But as a city council member, one of the things I have to look for is, is look at the cost. And I have probably been the loudest person when it comes to understanding the numbers. Background in business as a business owner and as a corporate consultant leans very heavily to, let's see what the numbers are, let's see what they say, let's see if they're realistic. And, you know, I tore into this, this ECO Northwest report. I'm pretty sure if I pick this up at home one more time, my wife will leave me because I've spent more time with that than with her. And it's because going into any, going into any project, we have to just understand what the cost is. As of this morning, the number for operating the pallet sheds was $377,000, according to the ECO Northwest report. Went up by $100,000 by the time we got here this afternoon. And that cost, I believe firmly, is hundreds of thousands of dollars short. What I got back on the report was, oh, we, we forgot to staff most of it and that's why we didn't have the numbers. And then I pointed out, well, the report says security during operational hours. I, I think most of us here assume that we would have onsite security because that's what we were told. It was like, well, now we're just gonna do half the time. That just all happened. And I am so afraid that the numbers are being gold-seeked that by the time we get into this a year down the road, two years down the road, we're looking at a runaway monster in terms of cost. If we have an increase of 192% in our homeless population from one year to the next and we need to continuously provide these pallet sheds to the next 192% that comes along and the next 192% that comes along, we're never gonna be enforcing any camping laws because we'll never catch up. Um, I, I'm frustrated that the information that I received as a councilman was so poor that I can't tell you what it costs. How can I tell anybody to vote for it? We hear, oh, the city will chip in, the county will chip in, the state will chip in. Guess what? If you're a citizen of Ellensburg, you have three government hands dipping into your back pocket. That's what that is. And we, so we need to understand the cost regardless of what pocket the money's coming out of. So I, I'm gonna vote not to affirm because we do not have adequate answers. We don't have any sort of operating procedure even at a high level because we don't know who's what. The staffing's, even in the latest numbers, is insignificant and so we'll just fill it with volunteers. We just had nine years of volunteers that said enough, we can't do it anymore. So where are we gonna go find those nine, you know, nine years worth of volunteers to, to step up now? So I would caution all of you, do not get caught in the trap of, well, if you're not for it, you're heartless. At the end of the day, you have to take care of your home first. You have to take care of your business first. And all of us have a checkbook that we look at that right now in this community, if this economy is tight. So I'm not saying we don't help. I'm just saying we don't have enough information right now to make a decision on whether this is the best path forward and if we can afford it. Grants run up, so what happens two years down the road, three years down the road? It's coming from us. That's where that money comes from. We're not the federal government. We can't print it. So I advise caution, don't get caught in the trap of emotion, just look at the numbers. They're not accurate, they're not correct. We don't know how this thing will be running. Thank you.
So first I wanna thank all the citizens that are here. I am still continually I am still continually impressed by your passion and dedication to the community. The fact that you have this many voices in the room from both sides is extremely commendable for everyone. Please understand, this is a complex issue. Members of this panel are trying to balances both sides of this. And then you add to that the multiple socioeconomic experiences and perceptions on this. And no matter what the outcome is, I just want to employ everyone here to keep the civil discourse between yourselves. Because no matter what you think on this issue, we are all neighbors in this community. We all love this community, it's very clear. So, I ask that you do that. So, Josh spoke about the operating costs and I think a lot of you already know my background. I work and think about the capital cost. The concerns that I have associated with this is, you saw the summations of the sales tax, tax credits, the recording fees that summarize to 1.5 million essentially available to deal with this issue. Looking at the capital cost, we saw these seven sites. Just on a capital, that is the cost of purchasing or leasing and updating a property to be able to put something on it. You've got four properties that are below a million dollar threshold, just the capital, not the operating. So, we already talked about the operating, the concerns that we have there. And then we got three properties that are well close to $3 million or more just on the capital side. That's the purchase, the update, getting those up and ready. So, my biggest concern with any of those site considerations is always going to be not only the capital cost, but the owner, the property owner, support behind it. Because I get from everybody's opinion here, location was a big thing. And just to ground everybody's perception on this, I want you to know something. The homeless are already in your community tonight. They are in the creek behind Happy Feet. They are near Rosewood. They are around our campus, they're all over. One mile from all these site locations that you're talking about, they're already there. They didn't take a vacation, they didn't go to winter housing somewhere, they're here. We just stopped cold weather shelter for that season. I wanna commend the churches that have been putting in the volunteers because you are a reflection of the compassion in their heart. But I also wanna also thank the citizens because you are the compassion that talks about your home, protection of your property, concerns for your children and for your elderly. On this issue, my thoughts are that based upon the feedback that I'm receiving on these locations, there's really only an option that's gonna be $3 million plus in a capital purchase or something below that, below a million, that would be, even at Tacoma's location, the issue there is that if it outgrows it, now you're looking at two site locations. But at the end of the day, this is a question about being able to provide some sort of shelter to those that are vulnerable, that are homeless. I concur that we need to be able to have some sort of option for those that are homeless that need to be able to be able to stabilize and to be able to find a path home. And I agree with everyone that has spoken here that maybe this isn't the perfect solution, but the action here is, do we affirm a sleep center of some sort? And I do. I believe that's an important factor. Do I think that the things that are here that have outlined as far as the budget discrepancies on operating things and a capital concern, those are my biggest things, my biggest concerns? Because if we're adding $3 million to a capital cost of a project for a location that everybody is comfortable with, those taxes end up coming back to you. And it's gonna affect those that are already on the cusp of being homeless. So, it's a redundant cycle. My crazy thought in this, as I pass it off, is we've been operating with volunteers at the churches for a very long time. Why couldn't we just compensate the churches with the operating costs as opposed to building a separate shelter? I think that we could mitigate all capital costs, dedicate those funds. This is a partnership that would have to be talked out with the churches. It's time for you to stop volunteering and to be compensated for that directly. So, I am affirming the fact that we need to address this need, but this doesn't mean it's a selection of a site. It means that we still continue the options of figuring out what needs to be done. So, I wanna make sure that's very clear to everyone. Thank you.
I'm usually the quiet one, but I'm taking it all in, that's for sure. So, I have watched more videos and read more articles about homeless in our state and across the country than I can even tell you. And I think it's just like any, I hate to say political thing, is that you're going to find your answers on the side of the fence you sit on. Okay, so if I am on the liberal side of things, I'm gonna watch CNN. If I am on the other side of the fence, I am going to watch Fox News. So, I think that the answers we're getting are the ones we want to hear. And so, there is no easy solution to this. And it's, so when we, I heard tonight when we talked about these sweeps that they do in Seattle, again, the numbers are just, the sweep isn't giving them a bus ticket to Ellensburg or anywhere else. If you look up what they're doing with these sweeps, they've got these big encampments on the side of the road and they're just sweeping these, literally sweeping them to get them out of that location. So, they aren't taking them to a different town, they're moving them to a different part of Seattle. So, and this is causing, and it's causing thousands of dollars for the city to clean those up. So, you want us to not put up a sleep center? We'll let these people camp in our parks, we'll let them camp where they want to, we're gonna come in and sweep, and we're still gonna be spending thousands of dollars to clean up that mess. So, the money's gonna be spent regardless. And so, we need to help by sheltering these people. And I know it's not, I don't know, I mean, I'm a small business owner in this town and I look out at the faces here. I've heard both sides of the argument. I know half of you are not gonna walk through the door of my business, no matter which way I talk tonight. That's a tough spot to be in as a business owner. But I've made a commitment to the city and the residents of it to go with this where my heart lies and what I think we can best do as a community. And that's how I usually make all of my decisions. And so, I ask you, you know, it's, there's just, I don't even, I get caught up in it because it's emotional, it's a big issue right now. And so, I think we need to talk more with Mr. Keller. I think that that is a viable option. I think that, you know, and he's got some things in place. He's obviously very involved with our community, does his research as all of you have done. Trust me, I've read a lot of it. And so, I just, I wanna thank you all again for being, well, I do wanna tell one short story just about being a small business owner. I have a covered porch on my, at my business and I had a young man sleep there. And so, I approached him because I didn't really know what to do. So, his name was Josh. And I got to know this young man and I said, I have absolutely no problem with you sleeping here, just you need to be gone when my business is open and you need to clean up after yourself. And we had conversations every single morning when I would come in, which was well before opening hours, and he would, there was never a peace, you could not tell that that young man had been there. He was respectful to my business, he was out of the elements, not the cold, but the rain and the wind. And so, he just needed that little bit of boost. He was there maybe just a couple of weeks, never caused me a problem, nor my customers. So, I think that, and I can't tell you where he's at now, I don't know if he's a success story, but that little bit of kindness that I showed then was needed. And I think that's what we have to do as a community right now. So, here we are, listening to you in a university hall, not a town hall. But it is a complex issue. I don't know how to solve homelessness. I do think that a sleep center is needed. I do think that providing something, and we can still work on what that looks like, provide, makes it safer for residents because we're enforcing our no camping ordinances. And we need to give the police that tool. And we're preventing those homeless encampments, preventing people from sleeping in the alleys and in the doorways, like Delano said, they're here. And I think that the police have done a good job keeping them invisible from us for the large, in a large part. But, you know, they do impact our businesses downtown already. I think that for sure, providing shelter makes it safer for the people who are homeless. It helps people, the point is to help people get stabilized so that they can work on their problems. And I don't know how you get sober when you're sleeping on the street. So, the housing first model is, is part of the philosophy of this. So, I also think that it prevents a lot of ER and jail visits, prevents some hypothermia and frostbite from happening. There's, there was an estimate that I think we heard at our last meeting, $36,000 per year on average that we spend as a, as a society on homeless people, per homeless person. So, if you multiply that out by the 25 beds we're proposing to supply, that's $900,000 a year. So, it's like, how do you wanna spend it? On providing people shelter or on ER and jail visits? It's a sleep center versus do nothing. So, we have to think about what do nothing means. Does that mean some of our neighbors die this winter? We have to come up with an interim solution. And that's, that's a whole nother conversation that we're gonna have to have. So, is this enough? You know, putting people in shuts, not really, but it's needed to get to the next step because we don't have enough actual houses to put people in. And, and we, I mean, you all know that, I mean, the price of housing, the shortage of housing, it's hard, it's hard to rent something. There's just not that much on the market. In the market rate housing versus, let alone the affordable housing. But I think that we have to recognize and thank our social service providers for, for the most part, families, veterans and youth are housed in those, what do you call it? The transitory housing model. So, it's, it's part of a bigger system. Step one, get people shelter for a night. Step two, get them into housing. Is it expensive? Yes, but we are not proposing any new taxes. We're proposing to use the money that is already allocated for this purpose. I do appreciate Josh questioning the numbers and getting us more real. This vote is to vote for moving forward with something, some, something along the lines of this concept. We can keep working on the details, we can keep working on the site. I like the idea, we can explore just paying churches or others. And we still have a number of off-ramps because we have not put money down on anything yet. So, we, and we have not signed any contracts. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. I wanna thank my fellow council members for their comments, Mary Marks. I appreciate their diligence in dealing with this issue. Josh, thanks for the money part. Thanks, no, no thanks for the money part. Anyway, I've been working with the homeless issue in this community, in this county since about 2007. I moved to Ellensburg in 2000 and got involved with the County Homeless Affordable Housing Committee in 2006. And that was a tremendous learning curve for me. But I got to know the city really fast because I've worked with all the social service agencies. We were tasked with writing a plan for the city, for the county. And in doing that, we discovered a number of things. First of all, the county, the agencies were doing great work. We had people come to every one of our meetings and as we learned more, I grew to appreciate very much all the social service agencies we have that work with the homeless community. It's a very strong system and it's gotten stronger through the years. And one of the things we talked about and we dreamed about was a center, one place where homeless could be located and services could be delivered to them in that location. And while the sleep center was not the idea that we had at that time, it can help serve that function. I like the fact that Nancy, that you mentioned the housing first solution. Getting people stable in a place so they don't have to worry every day where they're gonna spend the night helps them work on their issues and helps them be more receptive to the services that are available. I've never been homeless, so I can't even imagine what it would be like to sleep one place one night and get up the next morning and think, where am I gonna sleep tonight? And can I come back here because, is it safe? Well, I don't know, there was a lot of things that went on last night and I'm not so sure I feel safe here. So, this shelter is a place of safety for those folks. This is something that we need, I don't know what it might look like. This is the first step and it's a good step forward. And I'd rather see us take it than not take it. I believe the homeless in this community need this center and I believe the social service agencies will support it. And maybe people from the community would help volunteer to staff that center and then the cost would go down. I heard laugh. Maybe that's where the rubber meets the road. It's the challenge for you to help us move forward with this and do your best. Because Ellensburg is a wonderful place and we have so much talent and skill in this community. And you have a heart for this issue, demonstrated that over and over. There's no reason why we couldn't have a model that involves the citizens of this community in caring for this population.
So thank you again, very do, very much do appreciate the, the support that you guys all expressed for each other. Again, I know this is a passionate issue and I want to talk a little bit about my perspective from somebody who's been involved in a number of volunteer agencies, CASA, Board of Health, Hope Source, just a number of agencies. And I've tried to look at this, Keddes County Health Network, tried to look at this from, you know, a community perspective and what produces the most long-term impact. And there were comments made here about, you know, hey, if we attract people, how are we going to get into doctor's appointments? And let me tell you what happens in the emergency room. I've worked at Harborview, I've worked with KVH, I've worked with a number of different hospitals in my 37 years in emergency services. And I'll tell you what happens in our community is that the DCR, the Dedicated Crisis Responder, responders are working with behavioral and mental health patients who come into the emergency room, sometimes through the correction system, but they're in the emergency room. And they are pulling the mental health workers in our community away from their full-time jobs because they'll work 48 hours over a weekend and then they can't capture their appointments for the following week. And so we talk about capacity and delivering healthcare services, behavioral health services, social services, when people are in crisis and you're having to react to where they are, is significantly more expensive than finding them at a point where they might be vulnerable, that may be in a place where they may be able to make different decisions and participate in a recovery plan or change their circumstances. And so, and I wanted to bring this back to a couple of different examples, one local, one national. But before I do, I want you to understand what it costs to call 911 for medical services, what the impact is to the community, what the actual cost for the services are, and the emergency room visit. And point out that, again, emergency healthcare costs 10 times as much as preventative healthcare and it's 10% as effective. Those are the studies. So you get a 1% return on your investment. And that doesn't make a lot of sense. And when we talk about the concept of a sleep center where the individuals who, you know, work, you know, give them very difficult jobs in law enforcement, behavioral, mental health services, are saying that, you know, pulling these people into a location where you can catch them when there may be an opportunity to line them up with the right social services, which are already there, and get them to, you know, make some different choices or take advantage of some opportunities that are there, is really important. And that pays significant dividends. We solve this problem one person at a time. This is not, you know, 38 people. This is one individual makes a choice and they go from, you know, needing services to being somebody who potentially is contributing to larger solutions. And so I'll, I'll talk about a local, a local example of this. And I know jail inmates don't necessarily garner a lot of empathy or sympathy from the community. And I, I sort of understand that. About 10 years ago, I was doing some work with the Keddes County Corrections. And they were implementing some programs that were pretty radical in, you know, what is arguably a moderate or conservative community in some ways. They were implementing some, some programs in terms of mental health services, in terms of medication, Medicaid assisted treatment for opioids and sort of warm handoffs when people leave jail. And they were having a significant impact on recidivism. If you want to know what, you want to know how we waste our money, it's incarcerating people in a repetitive cycle. And I'm going to take that example, and again, kudos to the Keddes County Sheriff's Office because I think they have model programs and they're having success. The recidivism rate is down and that saves us all money and makes the community safer. I was working in Arizona, just very briefly, we were, we were doing review of the Granite Mountain Hot Shot Crew that was killed in a, in a burnover. And we were escorted along the site that the shot crew had taken on that fatal July Day. And we're walking in their things, listening to the radio traffic, talking to the people who were in charge of the incident in motion field. We were basically doing a staff ride to try and tell them, hey, this is going to be impactful, this, change this up. And as we were doing this, we were escorted by a 20-person hand crew from the Arizona State Department of Forestry. And I noticed they, you know, sort of had an affect to them. And I was talking to them, you know, and it just felt a little different. So I talked to the state forester who was with us, Jeff Whitney, and I said, what's the deal? You know, who are these, who are these people? And they go, they're a post-release fire crew. I said, oh, tell me what that's all about. He said, we take, you know, very high-risk offenders who either participated in our fire programs in state like we do in Washington state. And we invite them into a program when they come out of prison, the prison systems. And they're supervised by ex-inmates. And the recidivism rate amongst that demographic, that population, for the 13 years that program had been in existence, went from 74 to 6%. So they were losing one person a year to repeat. And how are they doing it? Because they had jobs for two years where they felt good about themselves. They were guaranteed to play for two years and then they were kicked out of the program. So the savings alone in the program, and I'm going to tie this back to, you know, the, the idea that we have a, you know, sort of a shared facility where we can potentially reach people and give them the opportunity to, you know, to say yes, instead of people constantly telling them no, is out there. Those programs exist. And that's, you know, when I look at this, this is not a perfect solution. I have some of the same concerns you do and I'm a taxpayer. I get it. But it feels like this is an opportunity for us to leverage the, the network of social services we have in our community, which is incredibly effective, but understaffed, and make it more effective so that we actually reduce the homeless issue. And that's when I, when I talk about my support for this concept, and I'm not 100% sold on every piece of this, it's because it feels like an opportunity for us to take that next step and to give people the opportunity to fix it. The homeless people are here. And like you said, they, you know, I have been dealing with people living in the area immediately adjacent to the Knights Inn through emergency services for 25-plus years. They're there. One summer they started 10 fires. So I had a very blunt conversation with them. But anyway, I, you know, like I said, this is, to me, this feels like an opportunity to potentially leverage the, the services and the money that's already being spent in a way that produces a better result. That's why I'm interested in it.
Mr. Chair, just a quick point of clarification on the motion that I made for the, for the one we will be voting on as a board.
Sure.
It affirms the concept. And I want to be clear that Councilman Thompson's research I have followed and I believe it needs to be validated. That is a significant point of concern that I've heard across this, but I, for the, the two here that are voting on this motion, it is a, it is an affirmation of the concept and nothing more.
Of the concept. We'll continue to work in hand with the City of Ellensburg on all the other things that that entails. Yeah, you're correct. Well, I'm not quite sure what else I can add or share to this conversation. I will say tonight, as a prime example of why I'm proud to call Ellensburg in Keddes County home, because we clearly have differing opinions in the room, but yet we had decorum and we can respect one another. So I just, on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, I want to say thank you to that. I've shared this before. The reason why I do support this concept is I'm all about getting people connected to services when they're ready to be connected to services. I think we're formed by our past experiences. Back in 2005, it's a 21-year-old returning home from deployment to Iraq. I definitely was not mature enough nor equipped enough to deal with what I had gone through personally. And and I had friends that committed suicide and became homeless because they didn't know any other way to deal with it. So I apologize for oversharing my own personal experience, but I do want you to be cognizant of at least where I'm coming at in this conversation. I do think that, and I was going down a path myself and I just think that we, I was fortunate because I have a safety net with my family, that others in our community, as has been pointed out from council and from the commissioners, that don't have that safety net and result in homelessness. And I wish I knew what I know now, then, to be able to connect individuals to those vital services. And for that, I, I do support the concept of a sleep center. I think that we're damned if we do and damned if we don't. And me personally, I think the right decision is to move forward with some sort of progress in regards to a sleep center. I hear everyone loud and clear that a lot of it is very, we need to focus on the costs that have been pointed out, but we also need to focus on location. Because I don't think it's the right thing to cite it where it clearly doesn't make common sense to cite it. We shouldn't have to worry about letting our kids go play. We shouldn't have to worry about it being next to a daycare or next to another population in the room that apparently shouldn't have handguns in their house. So I, I'm, I'm supporting this tonight because I think we need to continue the conversation. We need to continue the outreach and we just need to work together. So I appreciate everything that's been shared tonight and that's been said. With that, I will call for the vote for the Board of County Commissioners. The motion was to affirm the sleep center project and concept.
Aye.
Aye.
I too will vote aye. That motion passes. Turn over to the city.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing done, we'll, we'll take a vote, an affirmative vote. Your aye indicates that you are in favor of the motion, which is to affirm the sleep center concept. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I too will vote aye opposed.
No.
That motion passes. Okay, we have been at this three hours. Okay, three hours. The next up is the site list consideration, which I'm guessing is going to be less involved. No, just kidding. Does anybody need a quick break? Are you guys good? Keep going.
You guys go. Okay. I don't know how you want to do this. Do you just want to put the list?
I, I'm almost thinking, yeah, why don't we, why don't we throw each of the sites, obviously not number one, but two through eight onto the, the table and somebody can make a motion for or against and we can take two votes and move on.
Okay, so you want?
Limited discussion for this. Or do we? We have to do it individually to refine the site list, I think. Correct. We have to take individual votes or do consensus?
And could we do consensus between the county and council?
I got a lawyer down there.
I'll let the attorney answer.
Because it's a joint meeting, I think if you want to have the discussion first and then vote, you don't have to have a motion on the tape on this.
Okay. So, so do we want to start with property two, which was the Four Square Church? Okay, we'll start with the Four Square Church, which is 906 East Mountain View Avenue. So I'm open to, we're open to discussion from either council or the commission.
I would like to suggest that leasing does not make financial sense. And, and I guess I would, I would prefer not to, I would prefer to cite this on owned property if we're going to invest as much as we are in infrastructure.
We're having problems hearing the audio from the room.
What's, what was that? I've had some conversation. Okay, so initial comment is, so that would be sort of against this site because it's a leased site. Does anybody have anything further to say regarding the Four Square Church site?
I think we should remove it from consideration.
Does anybody want to speak against that action? So I'm interpreting silence as there's consensus to remove site number two.
Should we consider it removed?
Yes.
Okay.
So apparently Nancy's going to speak out against the next one.
Okay, the next one is number 3701 South Main.
Does anybody have any comment on that site other than it's leased?
Yeah, same logic.
I would also say we need to be protective of our industrial and economic core. We do not necessarily have an unemployment problem. We have an underemployment problem. And given the lack of land use that specifically allows business, let's be very strategic about those lots which are available. And I believe that one, where in its location, should be protected for future economic use.
Which would be removing this site from location. Okay.
Does anybody want to speak against that?
Okay, 701 South Main should be removed from consideration.
Site four, Berry Road and Canyon Road.
I personally am not opposed to leaving it on the list. I haven't heard a compelling argument to remove it.
To, to me, there are some considerations related to size and cost, but those don't necessarily preclude us from leaving it on the site. So I would, I would, or on the list, I would leave it on the list.
Yeah, I think universally, it sounds like people are very concerned about location. But as I mentioned on the capital cost, my concerns here is $3 million on the capital side on, against the 1.5 million annual budget, both city and county. So that's my only reservation with that.
I would say it can stay on, but I would be possibly prepared for the Supreme Court ruling to hopefully tighten up on proximity to amenities, given it's, you know, long distance to the, to the downtown core. What would be considered core amenities, we should be prepared with clarification to potentially have to drop it.
So leave it on the list, not get into the weeds on all the details at this moment?
Agree.
Okay.
Everybody opposed, so site four, which is the Berry Road and Canyon Road stays on?
Stays on. Site five, Highway 97, it's parcel 16644.
I say that this one should stay on the list. This one's an interesting one as far as capital costs, what I was mentioning. This is the one property that is below the $3 million threshold possibly for purchase, that capital cost is a little bit under a million. But again, with all these costs, I do want to question, but I, the question of leaving on the list, I say that we should keep it on.
I would agree.
Have a concern about the distance that this site is from the downtown area and whether or not homeless would actually use this spot if it were where the sleep center.
Okay, so we'll probably need to just kind of.
It's not close to any amenities. There's no bus route out there.
Hold on. Okay. So is there any other conversation regarding that site?
I think there could be buses out there. And I, I guess I asked that question today. It's like $2,000 to $5,000 to establish a stop further out. And the, the extra miles and time are minimal. So you have to, to drive the extra half mile to, from where the existing stop is. So I, I agree that it's, it's further out, but there are, there are businesses out there. It is a, it has potential, you know, same potential as Main Street to, that's primary real estate as well. So I would keep it on, but with those concerns.
The only, I guess, addition to that sentiment, which I would agree with, is that should development happen out there, this, this capital improvement for the utility extension, I suppose, could be leveraged for, for that purpose, in which case it would need to be moved. So it may go there, but it may not be its final location.
That's a great point.
So not really a complete consensus, but sort of a majority.
Certainly, yeah. Okay. So we have site four and site five that are still on consideration. Site six, Helena and Sycamore. To Nancy's point, I believe that's a lease. Site six, Helena and Sycamore. To Nancy's point, I believe that's a leasing, well.
I'll speak to that for those in the room. The county and the university are working on a transaction potentially for a airport asset, our main hangar, I'll just say that. This has been an issue for the university to not have a solid base in this, at, at that facility that they actually own, which is why they were looking at moving it. This would lock it in for them. The other bonus of that is by them owning the hangar that they are in and still leasing the land under it, which they have to from the county. It would allow for further funding options for them for federal improvements for their flight school program. The kind of tricky part in this is that we have to work through the land use process, how, how this would actually happen. I will say though, that the university never parts with dirt. So the fact that they are considering that says a lot about this administration and what they are trying to accomplish now in terms of trying to find solutions that support more than one party. So I would very much ask that this one be left on.
I would advocate for that as well. Appreciate that insight. So it sounds like, is there any opposed? Okay.
This is one, I think, that potentially is less than the 3 million, potentially. And you may know more than I do, but if you didn't have to subdivide the property, you would not have to have the capital investment that, that is cited in the report. And I guess this is, this is one that I would violate my lease if we, if we leased with the intent to purchase or trade. I would, I would be okay with leasing it for a period of time from the university.
Okay. Great. Sounds like six will be left on the list of consideration, and then that would move us to site seven, which is Green Avenue, which is in the proximity of the Highway 97 parcel that we just discussed. Any opposed or any for keeping that on?
I have concerns about this one simply because of the, the, the sale price and the fact that so much of it isn't covered by floodplain. There would be a significant amount of capital improvement to alleviate that condition.
That's a great point. Yeah.
That was my, that was also my concern on the capital cost.
Okay, so let's remove Green Avenue. Okay. Last but not least, 303 West Tacoma. There any for or against that want to speak?
So I'm going to say for. The reason why is our concern, my concern at this stage is that as it stands right now, we've missed our opportunity to get something established for this winter. So we've got a risk out there. So I'm looking for options that may be able to be established pretty quickly. I already mentioned, I suggested my idea, but as far as property location, this might be the quickest out of all the locations that could be established. So I'm for keeping us on there.
You're for keeping it on that?
Yeah.
So this is too small to do the model that we outlined with the sheds to, to provide for the number of people that we have said, 2.5 sheds. I, I guess, the caveat is if we want to pursue a different sort of model and, and consider a different sort of model, we can keep it on. But, but I think we all have to realize that it is in the floodplain. We have to do compensatory storage on site, as I understand it, 0.2 acres. So this is going to be it's going to be difficult.
But should we leave it? I'm seeing head nods as you're talking from, I'm looking at the council. Sorry.
Yeah, this, this is one that, again, this is more of a speed thing. I think there absolutely has to be evaluation as far as the capital improvements because it is in a floodplain. Also the same concerns as far as purchase versus leasing. But as far as a viable speed option to be able to get something established, it should be left on.
So I guess I have a question. It's indicated that the site is for sale, but another purchaser has a six-month option to purchase the property. So unless that's exercised, we're six months out before we can do it. Very good point. So.
I believe that Pat Keller is the person who has the option.
Okay, well.
And is the one proposing.
Yeah, so wouldn't, wouldn't us buying it six months from now be?
No, you're, you're correct. And Mr. Keller outlined some of those criteria that he mentioned for that property. Forgive me, I forgot about those.
But my concern is the size. It's so small. Why would we invest money just to get something in place real quick when it won't work for the long term? It doesn't seem feasible to me.
Okay. Yeah, let's take a quick handful. Who would be, well, yeah, for city council or county commissioners, who is for leaving this location on for consideration?
You shot my idea down on speed, so I retract my original. So just those two.
I'll speak to that. And the reason why is because I'm open to different models. And so I think the size would work as Lil Twist had stated, if we chose a different type of facility. I'm open to whatever works best for our community. And so I don't want to necessarily close the door.
I, I would take it off because of the condition put on the property, that it's a 24/7 shelter versus the 14-hour model. It's going to, if we're already concerned about the cost of 14 hours, what's 24 hours going to cost? So because of that, there are legitimate concerns, including the floodplain. I would say take it off.
I will say that, yeah, I agree to take it off, but I am intrigued with the model that Mr. Keller was describing from it, not necessarily the timing and stuff, but from what appeared to be a proven system in other places. So I would be very interested in hearing more about that.
Same.
Oh.
So are we comfortable, you know, taking it off because it's a clear majority, or do you want consensus decision?
I, I think.
By consensus or consensus?
Okay, leave it on. It's on.
Okay. So property eight, we'll leave on for consideration. So we've whittled eight properties down to four, which is the Berry Road and Canyon Road, Highway 97, Helena and Sycamore, and 303 West Tacoma.
Okay, we're going to move on to item agenda 4A, which is an update on the cold weather shelter, which we will be doing to some additional efforts.
So as you know, the KBMA voted earlier in the spring to remove their participation in the cold weather shelter due to a number of factors, including some churches that were having difficulty participating because it moves from church to church, as well as just getting volunteers. There's been a decline, I think, in the volunteerism. Each year has become more difficult, and they're having to rely on a smaller core of volunteers to do the same work. So right now, we are facing the loss of any shelter for the winter season coming up, starting normally in mid-November through mid-March. And given the current legal status, both the city and county have similar camping ordinances in place, and I won't speak for the county, but I believe there's a similar to ours. And ours basically says that if we don't have adequate shelter following, again, the current case law, then that camping ordinance cannot be enforced. So we're looking to come up with a temporary solution for the coming season. You know, the numbers that we received from KBMA indicate that they've been pretty steady in the, in the number of people that are using the shelter from year to year. The 22, 23 season had a few more people using it than, on average, than the 23, 24 season. And that's largely, we understand, due to the more severe weather last winter than this weather, than this winter. The number is generally an average of about, it can be as low as eight at the start of the season. It's been as high as 17, 18 last year. I know it's been higher than that in previous winters, up to 20 at times. That's a, usually a short-term issue. So I think that the direction we're looking for is to begin the discussion on, on a, on an action team for the 2024, 25 winter season, made up of staff from both city and county to locate a temporary location. Most likely is going to be obviously a congregate setting, as it has been. And we need to probably get moving on that fairly quickly. Typically, the KBMA was putting something together by, starting to by July to have it all in place. There is, we think, funding available, as there was for KBMA, to put together a congregate setting. And then we, we know that at least some of the churches are willing to, again, participate in terms of trying to provide volunteers, although they won't be in charge of obviously organizing it as we move forward.
Counsel or commission, do you have any questions?
I guess what's, what's the next step? I mean, we don't have a site.
I do have a question, and it may not be a very nice one, but I'm going to ask if law enforcement would mind a little help on this. What happened before we had a cold weather shelter? Can either of you say what the conditions were? What the, I, you guys are like, thanks a lot, Corey, really appreciate it. I don't blame you. But I, but I, I would like that context. I think it's an important question to ask. The KBMA stepped forward nine years ago and said, obviously, there was a need. What precipitated that need? I mean, we're talking about conditions and such, but at the same time, what happens when it's not there? How does this problem get solved organically? How was it solved organically prior, prior to this? It's an uncomfortable question, but I think it, it, we've had a volunteer organization do it. We paid them because they were not, or because it was, it was a drain on resources. But how do we scramble to find something? What if it's not there? You know, it, it, does it, does it at some point say we, we take the winter off, which is a terrible thing to consider for some folks, but how does this problem get solved potentially?
Kind of goes back.
What's that? I understand, but what I'm saying is if, if this is a $200,000 for one winter solution.
Right.
That's going to be a concern for me.
I get that. Some of these other operating costs and things that we've got to evaluate are definitely a concern. But as far as trying to address the problem pretty quickly, especially come up with this winter, I think it does require that community solution. So this is talking with churches, and obviously you're not speaking right now, so I can't dictate to you that. This is just, again, Delano Palmer's thoughts on this. As far as the tap resources that the churches have mentioned, how can we, the city, the county, help with that? And I'll set that. I'm not sure what we can do to address those immediate concerns, but I think that's the dialogue that needs to, to occur so that we can at least have that established for this winter. Is that a long-term solution? I'm not saying that by any means, but yeah, my mind is shifted to how do we deal with this winter?
I guess, you know, this would be one of those opportunities to throw this back out to the audience, because I think everybody, you know, may get a little bit closer on, on this specific subject rather than, you know, the sleep center in general. And what are the solutions? And how do, how do we do this? And again, I want to, I want you to understand, you know, I see a, a small subset of people in the community, but disproportionately, you know, you bring somebody in, it has a crossbite injury, and you're going to pay for their healthcare. And we're talking, you know, if it involves, you know, something like an amputation or something, we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars. So if you talk about what happened before, you can extrapolate that, you know, we had more ER visits, you know, because people fake all the time in my industry, they fake chest pain. I worked with an individual in the Seattle Tacoma area who, and look it up on Seattle Times, Tacoma News Tribune, they did a story. He had $3.4 million worth of healthcare costs associated with his care because he knew what to say. And the laws do not allow emergency rooms to turn people away. When it's cold, where are you going to go? Jail or the emergency room? And those cost more than, you know, a solution that is designed by this community. And again, I'm throwing this back out there, you know, help us solve this problem.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. And that's the kind of information that I, that I want to get out there to say, what's, what's, what's the comparative here that we're looking at, right? Because people have died, but.
We used to have hotel vouchers.
But yeah, but, you know, we've had mild winters too. I mean, this, there's a lot of different information that goes into this. I am certainly not saying, don't do anything. I am saying, scale, scale it to what is appropriate in for a temporary measure, because we have clearly said we're moving to the next phase. Completely agree.
Okay. Counsel or commission?
Thank you all for sticking around this long. I really do appreciate, we all really do appreciate everyone's concerns and feedback. We know that we'll hear from you, but thank you.
We're adjourned.
Yeah, we're concluded. Thanks, everyone.